Committee to order at 6:39 on Thursday, February 15th, 2024. We'll take attendance by roll call since we have one member attending remotely. Irv Rhodes, can you, are you present and can you hear us?
I'm present and I could hear you. Please turn off your cameras.
All right. Deb Leonard.
Present.
Bridgette Hines.
Present.
Jennifer Shaw.
Present.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business is to approve minutes. We have two sets. Let's start with January 18th. So did members get a chance to look at those meetings, those minutes? All right, did anyone have any comments on the minutes of January 18th? Jennifer?
There are a few spots where my name is misspelled. It's I-A-O. It's okay. A-I-O is a common misspelling. Just if you could just check, change those.
Yes, search and replace. Any other comments on the minutes of January 18th? Then can I, would anyone like to move to accept the minutes? Jennifer?
I move we accept the minutes of January 18th, 2024.
Is there a second? You have to turn, yes, sink in. Thank you. All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Irv?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you. All right, our next minutes are from two days ago. Thank you Debbie Westmoreland for excellent minutes and quick turnaround. I'll let you bring those up, or maybe Doug is doing that. I have one comment. That there's a very long paragraph that records all the public comment. I'd appreciate it if you could just break that into maybe five paragraphs just for ease of reading. Does anyone else have comments? No? All right. Can I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes of February 14th.
It's actually the 13th.
February 13th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Irv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. All right, we now have public comment. So we'll start with a comment from anyone in the room who would like to come forward. Then we will show the written comment, much shorter than the other night. You're not, and there are no phone messages. So if you would like to make a comment, you could get in line, come forward. You have three minutes, three minutes, and thank you. The mic, as long as the green light is on, the microphone should be on. So coming up, please give us your first and last names. Tell us where you live.
I'm Ariel Templeton and I'm a resident of Amherst. I want to start by thanking all of our students who were so brave and played and spoke the other night. Their bravery was truly inspiring. So I also am a parent. I have a 10 and a 12-year-old. I'm the director of the band program at Wildwood, Port River, and Crocker Farm Elementary Schools as well. At Tuesday night's meeting, I spoke about the devastating impact that the proposed cut to our program would bring, how inequitable it would make our program for less privileged students, how it would hurt the middle and high school programs, and how it would substantially impact our students' education. But tonight I would like to talk about the logistical and scheduling issues that this cut would pose. Currently, we have 120 students in fourth grade, 130 students in fifth grade, and 90 students in sixth grade. Sixth grade is still smaller coming out of the COVID era, but this year's numbers will leave us with 250 returning students next year in just fifth and sixth grade alone, not including any new students who will sign up for the program. It is safe to say that we could have nearly 300 students in fifth and sixth grade band and orchestra next year across four schools with just two of us to teach them all. It is important to note that we have to work within the confines of each school's unique schedules and limited teaching spaces, often only being able to see four to six students at a time. Additionally, we have to schedule around lunch, recess, specials, certain academics, and our students' other pull-out services. Every student is entitled to a 30-minute small group lesson and a larger ensemble rehearsal once a week, and we have to schedule groups by instrument and playing ability in order to effectively teach and differentiate instruction. As you can probably see, the math for doing this between just two teachers doesn't really work. It's also important to note that our team services Pelham in addition to Amherst. We serve four schools, not three, and they do not have a separate team. I repeatedly heard at Tuesday's meeting that this is not an issue for Pelham, but a cut to our team either means a cut to that program or adding the Pelham band to one of our schedules, which will already be very full, or hiring someone to fill that void. I'm also curious to see what it looks like when sixth grade moves to the middle school, when we will have the middle school's unique schedule to work around in addition to the school schedules at each elementary school. Depending on how sixth grade band and orchestra is incorporated into the middle school, this could also potentially mean students would only get one year of small group lessons in fifth grade, which brings me back to the most important point. This cut would significantly impact our most vulnerable students, those from the most historically disenfranchised groups, those who are not neurotypical, those who need additional support, those who cannot afford private music lessons or instrument rentals, those whose parents might be working evening shifts and are unable to help their child practice at home. Instead of being an inclusive program, it would become a program that serves those who are already the most privileged in our community. We pride ourselves on equity and inclusion in Amherst. It is in our mission statement. This is an opportunity for those in powerful positions to show that they truly care about these values. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to do a joint comment on behalf of CPAC.
Yes? Is your mic on? Sorry, I don't, or is there a green light on?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, thank you. Please state your names.
So my name is Maya Eddin and I live in Amherst.
I'm Ellen Jedry-Godera. I also live in Amherst.
Okay, so there was a lot of talk at the previous meeting, and there will be a lot of talk today, I'm sure, about the cuts to the instrumental music program. And as somebody who, whom, you know, intense music education was a part of my formative experience, I take that deeply, those cuts deeply to heart. But I also want to call attention to the cuts to the special education program tonight. I also, and before we do that, I want to point out that the parents of the students most affected by these cuts are the ones most unable to come here tonight, or the ones who are most likely to not be represented at meetings like this. I know personally of many parents who are unable to attend tonight's meeting because of the needs of their children. I myself was nearly one of those, was almost unable to come tonight for that reason. And we want to make it known that we are speaking on behalf of all those parents who cannot make their voices heard due to the extra caretaking demands that come with parenting children with special needs. So two nights ago, as you all know, we read for the record a petition from, that at that time was from over 150 families in Amherst, asking you not to cut the preschool paraeducator and the two special education teachers in Crocker Farm and Wildwood in addition to the instrumental music instructor from the Amherst Elementary School budget. That petition now has nearly 200 signatures and it's still gaining more. And at this time, we want to provide some additional comments that are related, in particular, to special education.
Thank you. And I do want to voice my support for the music program as well and the music instructor. Just personally, very important to my own child and myself.
Can you pull the mic closer?
Sure, sorry.
I want to make sure your voice is caught on the recording.
Yeah. So on Tuesday, the superintendent stated that despite removing one paraprofessional from the preschool and two special education teachers from the elementary schools, Crocker Farm and Wildwood, we, our district, would still be in compliance with all of our individualized education programs. My own child is in a co-taught classroom, but I know that teacher also teaches another grade. So how is it possible, when that is projected as what we would need to cover the services for the children on these IEPs, that we can take them away? Even if the IEP services can be covered, when there is a minimal staffing level, what happens when a teacher is absent, maybe for an extended period of time, or a paraprofessional, or another service provider? It means you have to fill that position with a sub. Subs can be very challenging for some of our most vulnerable students because of lack of familiarity. And we have trouble finding subs right now. And so if you can't find a sub, the service isn't provided. And we are out of compliance as a district with a free and appropriate education. We do know of families that have reported to us that their children's services had been disrupted because of extended absences of staff and because positions couldn't actually be filled due to lack of applicants. When we lose staff like our paraprofessionals and special educators, the wonderful staff that we have, we lose their institutional knowledge. Schools across the country and the Northeast and our district, they're facing significant shortages in applicants for a lot of positions. There's a hiring crisis. I read a federal report about it just a few days ago. It's really difficult to find good, experienced, trained staff. And if not, we might have to hire a contractor to fill those roles. Contractors cost more, sometimes twice as much, or maybe three. I'm not really sure. It could cost more, but in the end, we might lose financially, but it's really our kids that are losing the most. So we're asking you to not cut these positions, and we want to work with you to find another way, find other sources, talking to the town council, talking to universities. We just are asking you not to accept this budget. Thank you.
Thank you both. Welcome, please state your name and where you live.
Yes, my name is Michelle Prindle and I'm a resident of South Amherst. My son Declan spoke the other night very eloquently at the meeting, and he is autistic. And I speak also along with my fellow parents in support of the special ed programming. But I'm here tonight as a music educator and a working musician to talk about the brain benefits of music education and how this is inequitable for our students. As a music educator and working musician, it is extremely frustrating to continually see music education come to the chopping block when cuts need to be made. We are the only discipline that is continually forced to justify its value and continued existence as an academic subject within the school setting. Yet years of long-term longitudinal studies into the brain benefits of music have borne out the value of continued music education in the public schools and at earlier and earlier ages. In her auditory neuroscience laboratory at Northwestern University, Professor Nina Kraus has conducted decades of research into the cognitive benefits of music education for elementary-age students. In the Argument for Music Education, which she co-wrote with another scientist for the American Scientist, Kraus documents studies her lab has conducted both in urban Los Angeles and urban Chicagoan school districts, which have time and again demonstrated the value of instrumental music education in the formative years. This value includes, but is not limited to, improved academic outcomes, including speech-in-noise discrimination. Speech-in-noise discrimination is particularly valuable to neurodiverse populations of students who have difficulty attuning to important educational content and the sound of the teacher's voice in noisy classrooms. However, music instruction is so directly linked to the language processing centers of the brain that it improves these functions, allowing musicians to more quickly and accurately encode speech sounds than those of non-musicians. She goes on to cite the stronger memory and attentional skills of students with music instruction compared with non-music learners. Additionally, she states that musical experience early in life imparts lifelong neuroplasticity. The article cites three areas of argument for music in our schools. The indirect argument is improved brain function with the strongest empirical support available. The incentive argument is that test scores are improved and also graduation rates, as studies have shown. This makes it easier for administrators like you all to justify keeping music education in the school budget. And then the intangible argument, which manifests in ways difficult to quantify in research studies. These intangible benefits include improved focus and discipline, social engagement and satisfaction, friendship, and improved self-confidence. In conclusion, it is easy to see from just this one researcher's decades' worth of research among the decades of empirical data and studies that have been published by other scientists that it would be extremely short-sighted for this committee to cut funding to our elementary music instrument program, and at the same time, how this would adversely impact students with disabilities and also children from less privileged backgrounds who cannot access private music lessons. This is an issue of equity.
Excuse me, can you conclude?
And inclusion. And the school committee must stand by our music program and not fold to pressure to cut any funding. Thank you.
Hi, can you state your name and where you live?
I'm Nina Mankin and I live in Amherst. I have a sixth grader at Wildwood who is not a special needs child. He has lots of needs, but he doesn't count as special needs, and he is in the music program. And he is also an athlete. First, I want to say how much he benefits from being in the music program with special needs children, that this is one of the places in his education where, and one of the beautiful things about our values being actualized in this, in our education system, is that he gets to be with special education kids all through the day. And the band is a place that is an equalizer for kids like my son and those other peers. He's also an athlete, and I want to bring up something that I think is really important right now, which is that I thought that athletics was a place of equalizing in our, in our society, that it didn't matter how much money you had, you could rise up to the highest level. And I've discovered that's not true anymore. It's been changing over the last decade. And to be able to actually, if you want your kid to become a professional soccer player, it's not enough for them to be brilliant. You have to pay for camps and coaches and fly to tournaments. And the same thing is happening with our music programs across the, across the country, that it used to be that our children could go to school and become professional musicians. And everyone who plays a string instrument knows that if you don't start playing a string instrument early in your, in your life, you're not going to become a professional. We've already cut the third-grade string program. To cut the fourth-grade string program means that they're going to go to middle school. And I can tell you that the, that the, the music programs at the elementary level are astonishingly diverse. My son is black. His peer group is, is completely diverse. By the time you get to high school, I am told, that has changed completely. And that is because children don't get lessons in middle school. The only children who can continue into our high school program are those whose parents have the funds to pay for private lessons. Now, I understand that you guys, it's, there is still a band and orchestra program in the middle school. There just aren't lessons anymore. I saw you look up to the left. So we are about to build new schools. Our, our budget's going to go down because of that. I've been told from various sources, we have, we're going to lower our overhead in various different ways. If we cut this program now, it's not coming back. That's the way it works. And I understand that balancing budgets is really hard. I understand that you are one of the few places in this town where you can say, here's our budget, and your, the response is, great, cut half a million dollars from it. I think that that needs to be looked at on a systemic level. But there has to be some, some way for you to approach the municipality and say, this is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Debbie Westmoreland. I'm a resident of Amherst and in my 31st year working in the ARPS schools. Since 2019, I have served in the position of Director of Communications and Operations. Prior to that, I was assistant to the superintendent and supported six superintendents and more school committee members than I can count. I've never made a public comment before, but I'm speaking to you tonight because at Tuesday's meeting, the APEA Executive Board submitted to you a list of administrator positions and stated that those positions should be reviewed and possibly eliminated before considering cuts to classroom educators. I assure you that this work was done, and it was done long before any cuts were considered to classroom educators, because ARPS administrators have the welfare, safety, and best interests of students at the forefront of their work at all times. The guiding question for every budget discussion is always, what will have the least impact on students and keep cuts as far from the classroom as possible? Dr. Slaughter could not share specifics at Tuesday's meeting about the multiple proposed central office cuts, so I am sharing the one detail that is mine to share. My current position, Director of Communication and Operations, is one of the proposed cuts. And in consultation with Dr. Slaughter at the very beginning of the budget planning process, I am the one who proposed cutting it. I didn't make that proposal because I believe the work I do is not important, even essential, to keeping things running smoothly in the district. I made it because I know that all of the administrators' work is essential, but mine has the least direct impact on students' experiences in the classroom. Given the drastic and very real budget crisis our districts are facing, it was the right thing to do. By all means, our students, teachers, and community members should always come out to share their concerns about cuts and advocate strongly for what they want and need for our community's children. It was incredible to hear the voices of our students at Tuesday's meeting. But it was also painful to listen as members of the administrative team were labeled as unnecessary and as it was insinuated that Superintendent Slaughter was cowardly for accepting the fiscal realities of our town and doing the incredibly painful and difficult job he has been tasked with. ARPS has an incredible team of administrators whose work actually does have a very real, very significant impact on the quality of students' educational experiences in and out of the classroom. Please note that none of the proposed cuts were made easily, lightly, or without great sadness by those who had to propose them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have three minutes.
Yes, you do. Can you give us your name and where you live, please?
Carolyn Walker in Amherst. This is a recording of the Amherst Regional High School in 2002, my graduating class. Music written by Nick Juravich, also in my graduating class. It's called Waltz of the Furies. This is a sound of a well-funded and fully-supported music program. We had about 50 people, 50 students on our orchestra at the time. In 2006, for the middle school orchestra, combined seventh and eighth, there were 80 students. I was a student teacher that year because I went on to teach and study music because of this program. A student composed this and we played it. Here's the CD. I'm a mom of two kids who play violin. One's in the middle school orchestra now. It's her favorite class. When I was in elementary school, we started in third grade. The Comonantes Program dual-language starts in kindergarten because it's important to start students early. As a Suzuki violin teacher, we even start students as early as in diapers. This was on Valentine's Day at Smith College Auditorium because we couldn't fit all the people who wanted to come and see us in the Amherst High School Auditorium. This is a fully funded, supported program. We were cut off, cut off during the pandemic with enrollment, but if you cut us off, we'll be cut off at the roots and it can never be like this again. We were award-winning. And the kids can be that again. The energy is here. The infrastructure is here. And what gets me is not just this recording, but at the end, the size of the audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have copies.
Thank you. So we can move on to the written comment? Someone can share that? And is there a way to display it on the entire screen? Okay. Thank you. All right, so now we move to new and continuing business. And I'd like to run through how, I hope the timing will work so that we're not here very late, but of course, I will, that may yield to circumstance. So first, the committee will discuss the draft budget that was presented on Tuesday. Forty-five minutes. Then we have a draft memo from the vice chair, Irv Rhodes, and myself for the committee to review that outlines some direction to give to the interim superintendent. So I'm hoping we can spend no more than 20 minutes on that. Then we have, at long last, a second-quarter budget report for the current fiscal year. I don't think that should take very long. And then we can discuss the school choice matter. I think that will be a brief discussion. All right. So I want to say before we plunge into the budget discussion that by the time we're done, this committee needs to have given some clear direction to the superintendent so he and his team knows what, if anything, we want them to do to this draft. And I think we should be aware that depending on how much, on what that direction is, possibly we would need to have another meeting. I don't know. Our next scheduled meeting is March 19th, and that is when we should be voting to accept a budget and send it on to Town Council. All right? And I wonder if the superintendent had a chance to see a brief list of questions that he might be able to, issues that were raised on Tuesday at the hearing and could be, I think, directly and easily answered. If you don't have that, I'll just read them. All right?
Perhaps it's best if you read them.
Okay, all right. Does the district apply for grants?
Yes, there's a number of entitlement grants we have, which are, also require regular applications, so like Title I, Title II, et cetera, IDEA, which is for special education. In addition to that, we do apply for other grants as available, and we've received many of those over the years, and we continue to look for other grants that we can participate in. Often with grants, one thing to keep in mind is that grants are what are called non-supplanting. And so what that means is that you cannot pay for things you're already doing. You have to do something in addition with the grant money, and then that would potentially go away, or you would assume that that cost into your budget in a future year. So grants are helpful, but they generally, or in many cases, are what are called non-supplanting, and therefore they cannot substitute for what you're funding with your base budget.
Thank you. Can you explain why there is no grant funding for Comanantes? Some people wondered if we applied, or...
Yes, so I think the way to describe that best is we've partnered with some other communities that are also doing dual-language programs, and so we've been partners in a grant application over the last few years. We still got grant funding this year, but one of the bigger chunks that we use particularly for some of our local work that's specific to us was not funded. It was applied for, it was not funded. The state has supported us for a number of years in getting our program up and running. They've been doing that for a number of similar programs around the state. We applied. It's always disappointing not to get a grant, but they have a little shift in focus in looking at programs that are newer and trying to get them up and off the ground. So I think they felt that our program matured to a place where we weren't as needy as some others.
Thank you. Can you comment at all on progress towards any agreements between the town and Amherst College that might send funds to the district?
I know that, I spoke with the town manager on Wednesday morning. We talked about this very topic. He is in conversation with him at this point. Nothing formal is yet.
Many people have said we should get tough with the town. Can you briefly explain the roles of BCG, the Budget Coordinating Group, and the Joint Capital Planning Committee?
Sure. So both serve a similar concept in that they are a coordinated attempt to have different departments within the town meet, understand each other's demands and needs, and to come to cooperative agreement about how we proceed with the resources that are available to us. For joint capital planning, that's been in place over many years, actually back into the 90s, 1990s, and it has served the community well. What happens in that circumstance is members of the, what's now Town Council, formerly the Select Board, the library trustees, the school committee, all meet and discuss and review capital projects for the town and understand by virtue of the demonstration and testimony from the departments requesting the funding about the need and the urgency and how that fits into their larger capital program. And so that opportunity to come together and discuss this allows for some give-and-take and understanding of where the needs are and the urgency. It's like, you know, we need to do this this year, next year, then perhaps we'll be able to do your thing, that sort of thing. The Budget Coordinating Group is more around the operating budget. Same concept is involved. And again, the idea of we have a fixed or limited set of resources available to us by virtue of state aid and property taxes that are limited by Prop 2 and 1/2, New Growth, et cetera. And so as we talk about our various municipal budgets and the things that we're trying to fund, and the departments we're trying to fund, the Budget Coordinating Group is having conversations about essentially how to slice the pie and whether there's agreement and whether there needs to be change in that, or if the levels of funding are fairly appropriate for the amount of any of those given services that we have. You know, we have not made major changes in that in recent years. I'd say the most recent change of that would be when the town added the CREST program. That was a bit of an add to the sort of town services chunk of the budget, which means, you know, other parts held steady as far as funding and percentage-wise went down a little bit. That's the only change in recent memory. But again, the idea and the conversations literally starting tomorrow are going to be about, you know, what are our resources? You know, there'll be a review of the resources and how do each of the different departments fit within that total pie of resources available? And how do those elected officials who represent the broader community feel about and can discuss, you know, how particularly we slice that pie?
Is it the case that, let's say, this draft budget, let's say, the reductions that are proposed are made, do all grades still have a music special every week? Or do fifth and sixth?
So in our classroom music, you know, we call them specials for PE, library, technology, music. That is unaffected. So the classroom music is still taught the same way, the expectations around that. And in our elementary schools, there's a chorus in the upper grades that all still stays the same. Instrumental music is not technically in the rotation of the specials. It's in addition to. That's the piece of the program that is going to be affected by this.
Right. Thank you. All right. So now I think we turn to the, our discussion of what has been proposed. I would suggest we maybe first discuss, it doesn't matter to me, the order, the special education and music than the admin. Jennifer?
I have some questions.
Yes.
Doug, I'm looking at the adjustments, adds, cuts page, and under budget reduction, there's a central office administration position at .84 FTE at 51,000. Did I hear correctly that that position is the Director of Communications?
Let me display it, and then we'll, I'll make sure I'm going to speak to the right thing, so hold on just a sec.
So yeah, that first line, central, location, central office, description, administration, .84 FTE, 51,000. Is that correct? That's the Director of Communications position?
A portion of it. So the thing is, is that with most of the central office positions are shared amongst all three districts, and so that's why it's fractional FTE.
I understand. So the Director of Communications is 1 FTE, and .84 of that job is in the elementary budget? Is that how it works?
No. A portion of this is, there are multiple positions included in this. And so while there is a portion for the Director of Communications position, there are other positions also included in that .84?
Can you tell us what they are?
Yes and no. So the administrative changes that we're considering, in addition to the one that Ms. Westmoreland mentioned in her comments publicly, are going to involve, there'll be a reduction in administrative staff, how the position is defined, and the tasks and responsibilities that are held will be, is still, you know, part of our discussions exactly. So again, it's, I don't mean to be evasive here. I'm just saying that the nature of the work and who's got which responsibilities is going to change some. And so it's not as specific as a single position that's, you know, then parsed across the three districts. It's a little more nuanced than that, I guess, at this point, and still being developed.
Does this involve anyone losing their job?
It's involving positions that are currently open, that were originally budgeted for the current year that are open, and then, and then whether those or variations of those would be filled. And the change to Ms. Westmoreland's job would be, would be, would be a position that's currently filled and would be changed. And so, yeah, that would be more specifically related to her work, yes. But the, so I'm sorry if I'm not being clear. Since we're involving multiple positions here, there are aspects of this that are people who are employed with this. We'll either task them differently, or they will not be employed. And there are openings that we have not filled during the course of the year that are also projected in our budget, which are then part of this conversation as well. So it's a little bit of all of the above. I don't mean to, again, I'm sorry if I'm being confusing here, and nonspecific, but that's partly intentional because we're still working through that. But, you know, anytime we reduce positions, we're always trying to use natural attrition, retirements, vacancies, exits to cover those. And so again, we'll be exploring that as part and parcel of this as well.
Can I ask a follow-up? So it is not the case that, let's say, the regional budget is going to pick up this .84?
No.
Okay.
I'll preview that. Just, there'll be a similar sort of adjustment in the regional budget as well.
All right. Because when staff is shared across, okay.
It will look different, though, because it's a little differently structured in the regional budget.
Yeah.
So under this arrangement, what tasks will no longer, will the district no longer be able to perform?
I think it's more a reassignment of stuff. It'll be a little hard to sort of nuance it to that level of detail. I mean, there are things that won't have the attention that they've had in the past or we'd hope that they would have. So it's going to be a combination of things and some distributed, you know, it's more of additional tasks being put on to some people and some things not being done to quite the same level or extent that we would like to do them, would be the way I would describe it.
Thank you. Yes, Bridgette?
I guess while we're talking, yeah, thanks. While we're talking about administrative costs, I just noticed in the chart that it said stable, but that it was up 60,000. And I was wondering what's, sorry, what specifically is the jump about? Like, why isn't our administrative costs up 60,000? What's that for?
So there's a few different pieces to that. So there's the payroll piece, which is, in most cases, a pretty big chunk of what we do. And so that's a piece of it. And again, the chart that's in the budget book is before any of these sort of reductions or changes or adjustments are applied. So that's pre-adjustment. And secondarily, so, you know, cost of living increases, projected cost of living increases, steps for those that have steps, but also costs to the expense line. So in the central office, we have, like in the business office, we have software for our accounting system, and we have, let's see, property insurance wouldn't be included in there, our legal fees and our, or projected, you know, need for legal coverage, professional development for central administrative staff, et cetera, et cetera. Some of those are held flat. Most of those are held flat of things like professional development, you know, professional materials and that sort of thing. But there are some areas of our expense budgets that are, that are increasing. I'd say the biggest piece, though, is if you, you know, is cost of living adjustments for staff that are there.
Just, just here. Sorry. Just to clarify, so that 307-556 number, that's just expenses in central office, so that's not salary as well?
Are you in there?
Yeah, I know. I had the page numbers on.
That 307-556, yes, that's expenses, central administration expenses. So that's not payroll. Correct.
And so I guess, I mean, I think everybody would wonder, and obviously, we need IT and there, you know, and we need curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. But we're wondering, like, is there, are there places in there that are further from the student? I think that's what a lot of people are talking about, where there could be cuts. And so that's one question. And then I had one more thing on administration, which is there's a five-year trend. Maybe you could explain it. Special ed administration was 75,000, and now it's 277. Was that first year an anomaly because we were missing staff? Or like, why such a big jump there?
Sure. So in that central administration expense line with the 307-556, there are many items within that that are, that are... there are many items within that that are that are level funded. Some of the changes to the to those are are known, things like software expenses that are going up. There's, you know, we've we've experienced in the last few years where software companies are are doing renewals with fixed increases every year of like four percent. So that drives a piece of that. So there's not in in our review of those lines, there's not a tremendous amount of wiggle there. Obviously, if there's, you know, we we look at the actual experience that we have in the previous years in those line by line and and review whether they can be held steady. Are we over budgeting a particular line? We generally try to, you know, dial those back if they're they're not an area of 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 use. And we try to, you know, write raise those that have a higher level of 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 need. And so, you know, that 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 increases is generally fixed to the fact that we've either projected or know about particular inflationary increases or are are aware of, you know, price changes that we have. And obviously, in in cases that we can, we'll hold hold steady on those. And to the other question, yes, special ed administration, yes, we changed and have, there may be a particularly low number from, you know, the thing about twenty twenty as being, you know, we have about five year twenty twenty, yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, but particularly twenty twenty, what you see is a significantly lower expense of actuals across the board because as of March thirteenth, we basically stopped in in a number of areas. Now, we paid people through the end of the year. We, you know, we covered certain of our expenses, but many expenses weren't incurred. So as you look at at twenty twenty as a comparison year, it's a difficult year to use as a comparison because we had a certain anomaly at the beginning of the pandemic. Likewise, twenty one has some oddities as well because we were remote for so much of the year. But to your to your particular question about administrative staff, it could be that we had an open position in in that first year. And we also have created an administrative position to to manage our intensive needs programs. So that's one piece that that's they'll held there. We may have also, and I'm going to look at Dave Brady because she's here and she may know this better than I do off the top of my head. We may have shift how much, it's not necessarily more people, but how much Amherst was holding versus how much the regional schools or Pelham schools were holding. So sometimes we make those adjustments depending on on how much is, you know, the sort of appropriate responsibility of a given district. So that could be there. But I know we we added, you know, some some administration for the purpose of of managing our intensive needs programs a little bit more carefully and and fully.
And I'm sure other people have questions, but I just have two little things that came up related to what you said. There's thirty seven thousand in budget in finance, but when someone goes back to that office or fills those roles, won't those roles go back to normal? And then twenty nine thousand for assistant superintendent, but we don't currently have one. Just little pieces, I know, but maybe every bit could help.
Right. So, for example, the assistant superintendent, you know, when I was talking earlier to the question about central office administration, that's one of those positions that's currently not filled that we're looking at as far as how we rearrange our our staff and duties and and are looking at that. So, you know, generically, you know, does it hit that line specifically? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, that's part of the how we'll we'll play it out. So you know, that's included, you know, as far as salary is concerned, that's a piece that's included in that in that line of the of the reductions that we're talking about. The the change to the business office is is in addition of an accounts payable and payroll staff. That's by design and intentional because we, several years ago, we reduced from four staff to three. When we did that, the three people that were in that department at the time all had fifteen or more years doing accounts payable and payroll work and were extraordinarily efficient and capable and knowledgeable. And with that, there were tasks that were not getting done to the fullest extent and appropriately. To be perfectly honest, some of the staff were were coming in early because they like, you know, they would say, I like to get a good parking spot. But the truth was is they came in early and they felt the pressure to get the job done and they do it and then they wouldn't clock in until their appropriate time. So they were gifting us time during those years. That's not fair and appropriate for our staff. I've also had turnover in staff by virtue of retirement, et cetera, in the business office. And so to actually get the work done that we need to do to pay our bills, pay our staff, we really need four staff, two people that work primarily in payroll, two people that primarily work in in accounts payable. And with that, we're more capable of attending to the needs of of that department. So I think it's a reality that we need to to fund at that level for that for that department.
Thank you. I'd like to just check with Irv if he has any questions at this time.
Yes, I and and this this and I think one of the things I've said to Doug, and I'll have more questions later on as it relates to special ed. But one of the things that, you know, I think the school, and I I also put this in writing to you, Doug, is that all of us in school, not only the school committee, but the school community needs to understand the impact of these cuts, especially in the areas of instrumental music and special ed. And by impacts, I mean, how does this impact the students who are being served, the families that are being served in special ed? How does it also, how does it impact the students being served and the instrumental program? And how does that impact the future instrumental programs as you go forward and into not only the elementary schools, but the middle school and the high school, et cetera? In other words, it's really, when I look at all of these cuts, I think, you know, it's hard for me to make an informed decision if I really do not understand the impacts. So so that's one. I also know that when you cut in a particular area such as instrumental music, it has a multiplier of facts effect throughout the system that has been created. And that multiplier effect echoes all the way through the high school. And and that is something that really, really concerns me. Lastly, I really understand and I appreciate Doug, all the work you're doing on the administrative end. And I think that everyone needs to understand exactly how the administrative cuts that are proposed are going to impact this budget as well as, Doug, I know you're going through this on the, you know, central office, but please let us know the kinds of cuts that can be made and the impact that those cuts will have on the budget.
Would you like to call on Dr. Brady to?
Yeah, I think she can. I think it would be appropriate and helpful probably at this point to ask Dr. Brady to to provide some comment on the on the special education
Yes.
reductions that we're talking about.
Yeah, I had a question about that. Maybe we could both those two in together. So yeah. So in the classrooms where the co-education model would not be implemented, what model would that be replacing? And then maybe you could give, well, my questions span the the district's transition to a co-education model, the the reasons for that, and then what that would look like again in those classrooms that in which that that would no longer be the case.
Sure. Great questions, and thank you for asking. Because I knew you wanted more information, I tried to kind of write some of it out. So if I can just read some of this and then I'll answer specifics as well. But can I just add to about the pieces that's still up there, the central admin, the central administration? Because Doug, I think you spoke about the intensive needs position that was added, which was an administrator. I don't know if it's in that line, but we also shifted the preschool coordinator to be an administrator to really enhance the programming in the preschool. So that might have impacted that line, but so, okay. So I do want to just start with saying thank you for the opportunity to share some information and concerns about the special ed staffing because it's, you know, when it's right up there, it's worrisome to people. So I appreciate that. And I just want to start with saying that I've been here in Amherst twelve years now. And a large part of why I accepted this position was because of the community's solid reputation for supporting educations, more specifically, special education. And my career has been and continues to be focused on ensuring that our most vulnerable students receive the services, supports and programs they deserve in order to attain the skills they need in order to be included in school and beyond school for post-secondary. I know this is Amherst, but my job extends to students beyond that. And Amherst does an exceptional job of this. The the school and the larger community has only always demonstrated the commitment by providing resources to achieve this. And as many said the other night, and as we hear regularly from our families, they moved this community specifically for the special education services that they know their students, their children need and deserve. I'm also really grateful to have listened on Tuesday night as well as tonight to hear the voice of the families as well as the students. Some of them spoke, and that's always really heartwarming to me. To really help us hear their voice as we grapple with really hard decisions. And I say we, but I that's really, you all are grappling with this decision. So what I do want to say is that I don't believe that the proposed budget with the reductions, I'm going to call them reductions in special education versus cuts because I don't experience them as cuts because I don't think things are going to change that drastically. I don't think it puts our commitments and our students' educational programming at risk. Special education, I say this to people all the time, always does best when we routinely review the data and our numbers and the needs of our students and adjust our programs accordingly, whether that's increasing something or decreasing something or shifting. That's my job to make sure our personnel are doing that on an ongoing basis. The IEP teams, not me, nobody in administration, convenes to plan services and programming for students based upon their needs, and that's how the decisions are made. Our job in terms of administratively is to review that data from the decisions that IEP teams have and then develop our proposals for staffing of what is needed based upon that. It's that direction that things are are done. And without a doubt, and I probably couldn't do this work otherwise, that's a really student-centered approach versus saying, this is what we have and let's fit our students into that. Our current academic special ed teacher allocation has been in place since about two thousand fifteen, when I look back at my records. And when I first came to Amherst in two thousand twelve, we had three special education academic teachers in all of our elementary schools. We made an intentional decision to gradually increase that as we reviewed our instructional model and to promote and enhance the co-teaching model that was already in place. We did a tremendous amount of training. We did coaching. We really worked on making that model a model that would be effective for our students versus just saying, here's some more teachers, go try and do it. We did a lot of training. And we've continued that. And we continue to support that instructional model. We're not making a change in that. But as we look at the data from what the students IEP say in terms of the academic needs, we believe that we can achieve that with the reduction of two special education teachers in two of this, well, one in two schools. And we're you doing that by looking at the data that is from the IEPs that we're projecting things from. I can't tell you a year from now what that might look like, but I can tell you that's what we do on an annual basis, look at what is needed. This, one of the things that maybe has contributed to that is that student enrollment has substantially changed since two thousand fifteen. And it made sense for us to really take a deep dive into looking at the needs of the of what we needed for staffing based upon the IEP data, not just looking at the numbers of how many students were enrolled. And we did that in order to continue to build programming that would really be supportive of the wonderful programming and and services that our teachers provide as well as to be fiscally responsible. And I think that's part of my job, that I need to balance both of those, certainly with student needs taking the priority. I also want to clarify that the proposed reductions are not in the staffing of the specialized programs. We have three specialized programs in the elementary school, and there is no reductions proposed in that based upon the needs of when we look at the what is in the IEPs of those students. So there's no reductions there. I know that the other night, I think it wasn't clear to people what was going to be. And I think Dr. Slaughter did a little bit of clarification about the intensive needs program administrator. That position stays intact as a full-time position. It's just the allocation of what is where. But that program, that part of what we believe is essential to really support the students and the families and the staff in that program and those programs that will stay intact. So, you know, I leave you with the thought that this is done very, very, very carefully, looking at data, talking to the administrators, the building administrators to say, okay, when you look at your numbers, we we give them the numbers, we pull the numbers to say, this is what the IEPs say. This is what the special ed academic needs are. This proposal is based upon that. There are a number of students in the elementary school secondary as well who may have other needs on their IEPs that aren't special ed academic. Those are related service. There's, as you'll see, there's no proposed reductions there at this point because the IEPs don't support that at this point. If it did, we would be coming to you and telling you that as well. So I I leave you. I know the other night, people talked about compliance and were concerned about compliance. I take that very seriously. This does not compromise compliance. We will remain in compliance. We are proposing this based upon the outcome of the data in the IEP teams, not vice versa. So it is, I tell you that because next year, we could be coming and saying something different, and it will be based upon the needs, based upon the students' IEPs. So I don't know if that effectively answers your question, but I'm happy to take a deeper dive into specifics if needed.
So I have a follow up question, but I guess Irv does as well.
Yes.
And then, okay, go ahead, Irv.
I, you know, I really appreciate what you just said, Dr. Brady. But I I think it would be really reassuring to the parents, staff, et cetera, if if they understood, if as I'm understanding, that there is not going to be any impact programmatically to the special education programs via these budget cuts. That's what I'm understanding from you. And that there will be no fall off in service delivery and special education due to these budget cuts. That's what I'm hearing from you. And I just need to make sure and be reassured by you that that is the case.
Sure. So I think, before I answer your question, I just want to clarify, when we say special ed programs, that to some people means just the specialized programs. So the specialized programs, which are the intensive learning center and building blocks program and Ames program, those aren't being, there's no staffing changes proposed there. The special ed programming in terms of the academic services in the general ed setting as well as in the pullout, what we call B grid and C grid, those, the every student's IEP, their services will be delivered as based upon their IEP. The place where I will tell you, and I'm just want to be totally transparent, it will become a bit different for our building administrators when they go to do, when their master schedule and they go to assign and look at, in third grade, there's this many students who have B grid services and this many students who have C grid services. They will be operating using five special ed, well, in two buildings, they will be operating using five special ed teachers to do that versus six. So it will, I would say even when there's six, they're still doing that because you may have six teachers and sometimes we've talked about and you'll hear people talk about one teacher per grade level. Well, that sounds good theoretically till you have twice as many students in sixth grade and one year, and a smaller number of students in second grade. The fluidity exists all the time. So the answer is it will be a little different in terms of master scheduling. However, the impact on the delivery of services to students will not change.
All right, so as I hear you clearly, the scheduling, the master scheduling might be different, but there will be no falloff in terms of service delivery to those students impacted.
Correct, because this proposal is based upon taking the data from the IEPs, which really inform our planning and moving forward with that. I will tell you, and Doug knows this for sure, because I go to him sometimes, there are times that we have unexpected changes, like people move in or somebody transfers from somewhere and they have a student that has programming that was not anticipated. When that happens, we are always looking at, I don't care if it's five teachers per school or six or however many, we're always having to look at, what do we do in a circumstance that was dramatically impacting how we plan things? That happens in special education pretty routinely.
Understood, and I, and I, this is my last comment on this. There obviously is a lot of anxiety among the school committee, especially those in the special education area, special education service delivery at all levels, about the cuts. And, and to me, it's comforting to hear that the impact of these cuts will be negligible to none. And that is the message that I would like to, like the audience and those who are, are, will be looking at this to hear, so that will deliver a level of comfort that is not there now.
Well, I think. Can I just say thank you for saying that? Because I think from the perspective, and I like to work closely with our families, I think anytime you make any change, I think families of students with IEPs and with disabilities live in a heightened place of worry and concern about their children's welfare. And that's my commitment in my career, is to connect with them and to walk that journey with them, so that what we do in school doesn't contribute to that, but hopefully eases that, and they know that they have supportive partners in our school personnel.
Thank you. All right, I'd like Deb to ask her follow-up, and then we'll go back to Jennifer.
Yeah, so this is very helpful. I had hoped to seek your insight. I didn't realize we'd be able to do it as quickly as this evening. My understanding of co-teaching, and it's very unprofessional, because it's not my profession, is that you have a general education classroom with a special education teacher and a general education teacher. Is that too coarse?
That's one piece of it.
Right.
So it might be a general education teacher and a special education teacher. It might be a general education teacher and an ELL teacher. It's really two professional staff members with different areas of expertise.
Okay.
Working together. It doesn't mean all day. It means that for whatever period or whatever area that they're working on, that they are co-planning, teaching together. There are different models. Sometimes you can walk into a co-teaching classroom, you have no idea who's the gen ed teacher and who's the special ed teacher. Sometimes you may think the special ed teacher is the general education teacher and vice versa. But that's one model. There's, there's a number of different models. And I would tell you, when I walk into our classrooms, I see a variety of models happening. Some of them take a number of years of working together before they can really have fluency as being real partners. But it's not just gen ed and special ed.
Okay.
And it's not all day. So I think sometimes people think of it as that way. If we thought of it as that, I would tell you that we weren't doing that now.
More collaborative than.
Right.
Like co-equal. Jennifer.
So.
Thanks. I have a question about this, and then I have another question on a different topic. Faye, thank you for being here. My question is actually for Doug. Doug, on Tuesday night, when we were talking about this line, I thought you said that you, that the district had determined that the co-teaching model was not sustainable. And I also wrote in my notes that we are shifting away from co-teaching. And then I wrote bare bones in quotes, and I know I'm not sure what that's for, but is, and, so I definitely heard, I thought I heard you say not sustainable when it comes to co-teaching, and that we are shifting away from co-teaching. But it sounds, that's different from what I'm hearing Faye say. Maybe I misinterpreted something.
So it could be that I misspoke. I didn't mean to say that, I mean to say that. I think that it's, there are aspects that are changing because we have different staffing levels. So that's going to change how it looks and feels a little bit. And that gets back to the question of the sort of master scheduling and how we, you know, distribute those staff and, and serve the kids. So I think it's that more so than, than perhaps how I would, may have said it.
Can I add something to that? Because I think that, as I keep going back to looking at the IEPs to kind of direct us. And so when we have IEPs, that despite having the two professional staff members in the classroom together, that the team has proposed C-grid pullout services, that will change the model, because that teacher won't be in the classroom. They will be leaving with a group of students that the IEPs have directed that. And so right now, when we look at the balance of B-grid, sorry for using that vernacular, but B-grid and C-grid, there are a number of C-grid services. So I don't know if that's what Doug meant, but it may not be sustainable from time to time, because you're not having, I mean, you would be way over six per school if you kept a special ed teacher full-time in all classrooms at all time and a different person doing the C-grid pullout, so.
You had a second question.
So I have a question about a different topic, not, I have a question about a different, a different topic not involving Faye or special ed, so.
Thank you. Let's finish with, or, continue with special ed.
My question is fairly simple, I think, but I do want to say that I was, you know, an elementary school parent when you rolled out this model. You really sold me on it. I thought it was a terrific idea, and we definitely saw the benefits, I think, in terms of just the increases in inclusion and the way that it works. And so I think the question that I have, if you want to reassure one parent, you know, looking back, I would want to know, does this mean that some students will be receiving their services in less inclusive environments?
They will only be receiving their services in less inclusive environments if the IEP team has determined that that is what's needed for that student to make progress. And that's where this design is based upon the data that is there. One might step back and ask themselves, why, even though we really are promoting students to be in the general education class as much as possible, why are teams sometimes thinking that needs to be separate? That's a really complex question. And I think one of the things that, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with people about that, the impact of COVID and the disruption in education, in-person education for our students has been profound. And sometimes the least restrictive environment is pullout in order to get that student to a level of their skill attainment that they can join the general education classroom. But I don't know the real answer to that. I'm just, you know, guessing, because I did, we did see a huge impact on our students.
So you're deciding, basically, see if I can summarize it and have it correctly, which is you're deciding based off the needs of the students that less students will be in a, in a co-taught model, because there's more need for maybe more intensive academic one-on-one or small group work outside the classroom?
That's what the IEP data is telling us at this point.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
I will tell you the one thing, and I'll come back at some other time. There is a new IEP coming out with a higher focus on least restrictive environment. So perhaps the more robust conversations about that will influence what people kind of come out of that team saying, so.
All right, I have a question about special education spending, but not the reductions we've been discussing. And it may be related to what you just mentioned, Dr. Brady. There's been a very significant increase in, I don't remember if it's the personnel, it's, either way, it's in the expense for special education psychological services. So are we delivering healthcare? Or, I mean, do we have, can you, can you tell me about that?
Sure.
Yeah. And if it went up because of the pandemic, do we think at some point that need is going to go down?
I don't know all of what's in that line, but I'll try to answer your question, and then Doug can give you the granular piece of that. So we have seen a, and it's not just for students with IEPs, let me say that, a tremendous increase in the mental health needs of our students. So in terms of the support, the tiered level of support for social, emotional learning and mental health needs, that has been really on the increase since COVID. Is it going to go down? I have no idea. I know it exists, the providers out in the community have the same impact. If you try to get an appointment for your child to see somebody in the community, you're on a huge waitlist. Does that ripple into the school? Absolutely. Because if students with mental health needs are only relying on school services for their well-being, it's probably not going to do as much as when you have both services going on. So there's that piece. The other place, and I don't know, Doug, if this is where it is, when we talk about psychological services and you just look at our lines in general, we have some unfilled positions that are required for us to do. So when we have psychological evaluations, oh, I don't know if this, this might be region. Sorry, I'm speaking.
I know there's been a need to.
With the region hat on, so.
Yeah.
But, so, but when we have unfilled positions, even in the mental health service delivery, and we have to contract for that, the costs are exorbitant.
So I can also add to that a little bit. There's a couple of things here. So, so what happens in that circumstance when we've not been able to find staff, and yet we still have to provide the service, and therefore we contract it? You know, the cost shifts from being a payroll sort of expense to being a, a expense account expense. And so what you'll see, if you look at sort of history, is that some of those areas of, of like special education, and particularly in some lines, huge upticks in those over the last couple of years. And part of that's because we've had to lean into, to, to some of those contracted services, because to hire those staff have been difficult. And we've generally come to you guys at the, near the end of the fiscal year and moved resources from one area to the other. The other piece that plays into this in a more subtle way and a little difficult is, it's also in some of these lines where we apply what's called circuit breaker funding. And so, you know, and for better or worse, it reduces our expense line, because, you know, we, we don't really get the opportunity to apply revenue. And so when we have external expense with students, we have to get to a certain threshold. Once we're above that threshold, then there are eligible costs that are reimbursed at a percentage of those. And so the money comes to us. What we do is, is we perform the service one year, they pay it to us in the following year, we spend it in the year after. And so that way, we have a specific amount that we can, can apply to our budget. So when we're, you know, looking at a particular account line in our, in our budget, typically use, you know, our, our circuit breaker funds for things like contracted services or out-of-district tuitions or something like that. How much in a given year, you know, varies, because it depends on how many students hit that sort of qualifying amount of funding and how much the state is funding us in a reimbursement. But it's also a lagging indicator. So the money that we, the efforts that we made a couple of years ago are what's being applied in the current year budget. So that also impacts and can sometimes, you know, significantly, you know, decrease or increase by virtue of how much is available, how much our costs are. So for example, in the fiscal '24 budget, we had a fairly large amount of circuit breaker we could apply, which really reduced the number in, in our special education expense. Whereas next year, we go back to more typical sized numbers. So that's part of, like, if you're looking on, on what's, I've got displayed here on screen, you see special education. And you see, you know, a couple of years ago, sixty, 641,287. Part of that's larger, because we had more need for contracted services, not able to hire staff. And so we had to use outside vendors to provide that. It also is, is probably a result of a more modest amount of circuit breaker funding available to reduce that. But for the current year, it's at 19241. Well, that's much more, much lower than typical. And that's because our circuit breaker funding that's available to us in the current fiscal year is much higher. We had a strong uptick in the amount of, of circuit breaker that we have available to us. In sort of typical years, it's in the 250, $275,000 range. I think it's at 400 or 450,000 in the current year. I don't remember the exact number. Next year goes back to the more typical amount. And so that's part of what you start to see here in, in, like, in the current year versus the projection for fiscal '25. So that's also playing into this a little bit as well.
So we can't see what the true cost is. I mean, if it's rising, or, I mean, how it's trending over time? Because we're just seeing net of.
Right, it's difficult to sort of track that. I think, you know, one of the ways we might be able to is, is if we were to, like, let's say on the, on the sort of trending charts that we, if we put the level of, of circuit breaker on that same graph, you'd see how it's impacting the sort of, you know, net that you see.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more?
Can I add some, something?
Quickly, if you could.
So I just want to add, because you brought up about grants. So not specifically to special ed, but it does provide services to some of our students. So when we saw this increase in mental health needs, we have for, I think this is our second or third year, we have applied to the state and received funding for that. So we have SEL mental health grants that are helping to offset this to some degree in all of our budget, but it's.
It sounds like supplanting, which we can't do.
No, no, we had to, we weren't able to do that.
Okay.
We had to, we brought in additional.
You made it work, yeah.
Yes, we made it work.
Thank you. All right, I would like, is on special ed, or can we move on to music? Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Irv, are you all right with that? Thank you, thank you, Dr. Brady.
I'm all right, thank you.
All right, Jennifer.
So I think I learned something today I didn't, or didn't quite realize before, which is that, Doug, is this correct? In fourth through sixth, students have instrument lessons, and they play in a band or an orchestra. And in middle school and high school, there's a band and orchestra, but there are no lessons. Did I get that right? Yeah, I, for some reason, I didn't clock that. And I think, and that just emphasizes what I already believed. And Sarah, you said early, at the beginning of this meeting, that our job is to give guidance to Doug. So my guidance for me is I can't possibly vote to approve a budget that has this cut. What this cut does, you know, I'm not going to repeat all the wonderful things that were said by people on Tuesday and today, but one thing maybe that I heard a little, a little bit less is that this cut, by removing the ability for fourth graders to have instrument lessons in B and band and orchestra, it cuts the program by a third, around a third, possibly more than a third, because it's not just that students will have to wait another year to start. It's that like, for some kids, if you don't catch them in fourth grade, you're not going to catch them. So they're, you're not going to catch them at all. So you're, it's going to cut the, the size of the program, which is going to harm the program, which is then, as Irv said earlier, going to have magnifying effects for our middle school and high school ensembles, in addition to all the things that have been said and shared about the benefits of music, of music and specifically of instruments. And, and my own belief that music is as important as any academic subject. So I, I simply can't vote to approve a budget that includes this cut. And I'm going to ask Doug to figure something else out that doesn't involve the other specials and that doesn't involve other education, or other, other classroom, other things that affect children in classrooms. I, I know it's not easy, and I'm willing to help in any way possible. I have some other specific questions about, that I pulled out of the budget book that I can ask, but, that I can ask that might help just to find where those funds are going to come from, but that's my guidance.
Would you like to speak, Bridgette? Irv? Thank you. Thanks for watching.
Yes, I, I guess I want to echo Jennifer. I've gone through this, this budget. I've gone through this, this budget. And one of the things that resonates with me when I look at the instrumental music program is that it just reverberates. Cutting this program reverberates for a long time into the future. And therefore there's no way that I could sit here and say I would vote to cut that program. I definitely will not. We're going to have to figure out other ways of, and finding money in other areas. But this program is incredibly important. And to, and to have kids wait until the fifth grade is just doesn't make sense to me. This program, we, we cut it, you know, when it was in third grade and we went to fourth grade. And that was devastating. But this is even more devastating to say, well, you know, it's all right for kids to start in the fifth grade. It is not all right because of the cascading effects that it will have. So, you know, I definitely want to be on record, I will vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb? So I am conflicted. And I didn't expect that to be, I was quite moved by all the testimony on, on Tuesday and I learned a lot. And, excuse me. The part that I'm conflicted about, because I recognize the value in so many different ways of all the contributions people said this program, say this program makes to themselves, to their families, to their future, to their past, there's so many levels of it. It's a community event, it gets kids off screens. I recognize that removing fourth grade from the springs, strings program is, is really quite devastating. It's, it's not just a small reduction. However, students attending these lessons, if I understand correctly, it does not count towards time on learning because it is an elective program. So not everyone in the school benefits from it by choice. So I don't really know how to resolve those two. It's extremely valuable and an important part of who we are as a community, recognizing that many other communities have had to make this difficult choice not to support these programs. At the same time, if it is so essential, why is it not? I don't want to say core, but maybe that's the only.
It's not required.
Why is it not required? And I also recognize that the, because I was in the elementary school at the time where this became an issue. And I think the instrumental teachers were very clear that if students were not interested in attending lessons, it would be a disruption to the program. But I really don't know how to resolve these two.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to repeat all the many benefits of music for children's learning and socio-emotional well-being. But one thing I take particular note of as a school committee member is that we are one of the very few districts that offers strings in fourth grade. And that attracts people to our schools. And we, I think we need every student we can get. We certainly don't want to be losing students. So in, in addition to the, the benefit for the students who are in the program or would be in it next year, I think it's an investment for our district. So I want to highlight that. It's a relatively small amount of money. I have looked at some other lines in the budget and will have questions about specific items. But I will maybe ask a general, more general question about, so you're pulling, or this draft budget pulls money from revolving funds. So first of all, does it do so in a sustainable way? So that there will still be money left to do the same thing next year? And assuming that that answer is yes, can more funds from one or more revolving accounts be put into next year's budget to free up money to maintain this instrumental music? Any more questions or comments about it? Bridgette?
Yeah, I guess some, I just would add that I really feel deeply also about the instrumental music program. I really honestly, I want to see it back in third grade. If you think about a third grader and the energy and the willingness to try something new. I can remember my third grader coming back with a trumpet that was almost as big as him at the time. And then fourth grade, he stuck with it in fifth grade, but he was starting to get too cool for school. So as you pull those pieces back, you lose a lot of students who might be willing at that more open age, if you know what I mean. And so I really hate to see this and I would join Irv and Jennifer in not voting for a budget with that, those cuts. I think what, what comes to mind for me is though, this is the easier of the two budgets. And we really have to.
Excuse me, you're speaking about region?
Okay.
All right. Well, we can't get into details, but.
I don't, I don't want to. I just want to make that is sort of a bigger point, which is we've got to figure out something bigger picture than just coming through, something more sustainable. I'm wondering, is there, I know in my own budget, sometimes I look for a capital cost that can reduce my operating costs or some other ways, other ways to boost revenue. I think we could create a letter to the Amherst College president, for example. Like, we need to go, we, I mean, let's be honest, Amherst puts a lot less money than Williams does into their community or Brown does into theirs or Yale into theirs, et cetera. And yet it's the same level of school. So I just feel like it's time that we really look how we, we can't cut two point three million dollars from our schools overall this year. We, it's not sustainable. I don't want to sit on a committee that does it. Amherst schools are really precious and people came here for a reason. None of us, Doug doesn't want to be part of this, he doesn't, I mean, none of us want to be part of this. Let's try and fight hard not to just go directly to the cuts.
So I'm just looking back at Irv in case he.
I've said everything I need to say. And I really agree with everyone else's saying.
Can I follow up on the revolving funds?
Yes.
So, so here's the thing about revolving funds. So they're generally for a specific purpose and you have to use the funds for that specific purpose. So in the, in the case of, of using that to support the intensive needs administrator, that is, you know, we have by design over the last couple of years leveraged, you know, ESER funds and other COVID grants to, to be able to preserve funds in some of our revolving accounts. And, and so have not leaned on those as much in the last couple of years. It's marginal, but it builds up over, you know, we're fourth year in the pandemic. So we had some ability to do a little bit of adding to that. So that we're carrying a little stronger balances than we might normally, which allows us a little more time to lean into those. So we will be able to lean into that for a couple of years. But it's not a forever solution. But it also depends, you know, in, in the case of, you know, that intensive needs, it depends on other opportunities for, for students from other districts to come and, and, you know, leverage those resources from us. So for us, when we have a student tuition into those programs, it's, it's, we, you know, we only take them if we have the capacity to take them without adding additional cost to our, to our own program. And it also provides a bit of a service to some of, you know, smaller communities that just don't have the ability to kind of promote or have these kind of programs at all. So, you know, you, you think about a, a Pelham even or, or Lurin-Chewsbury. You know, a lot of small towns are really in that circumstance. If they have a kid with a particular need and it's fairly high, we're a fairly cost effective solution for them. And if we can do it without adding to ours, we can, we can generate that revenue. It's not so much of that, that it's, you know, a profit center. So we don't want to think of it in those terms. But, but we do have a decent balance. We should be able to support this for a couple of years. And then one of the things, looking forward, oh, just back to the revolving funds. So we can't spend the funds on other things, right? So I can't fund.
But I wasn't speaking specifically about this fund. I mean, any of the revolving funds that are.
The thing is, the revolving fund we have, it related instrumental music is, is rental charges and they pay for the repairs, the expenses and it's hundreds of dollars a year.
But, but are there other revolving funds that could provide more to what they're allowed to support? That would then free up the appropriated revenue to pay for?
And, and that's one of the ways in which, if you look at the, the adjustments at the top, we're doing that with our, with our tuitions for, for preschool to do that. So we're, we're reducing some burden on the broader budget by leaning into the, the tuitions from, from our preschool program to, to be able to provide support that way. So we've kind of tapped those out as a short story.
So that, okay, so you can't do more?
Not really, or we would have.
All right, what about ESER? Is it looking like there'll be more than four hundred? Is it too soon to say?
I think it's a little too soon to say, but that's obviously something we're continuing to look at over and over, over the, over the coming weeks. And if, if there's an opportunity between now and when we actually have to vote a budget that, that affords us more resource. Now, the other thing to keep in mind about that is that that won't be there for fiscal twenty-six. So it's sort of, you know, a double edged sword. It does preserve for the coming year and then, you know, creates a larger problem for the following fiscal year. So, you know, we can, we can leave that for tomorrow's problem to solve as, if, if necessary and, and we'll be, you know, fine. And, and I want to use every penny of, of ESER and we will. So, you know, the, the difficulty is, is at this point, you know, we're still about the middle of the year in some respects. It, you know, it's hard to determine precisely sort of where we're going to land. We have about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ESER that's supporting the Amherst Elementary Fiscal Twenty-four Budget. And, and how that's going to play out in the, in the coming months is, is pretty critical as to how much we'll have left. We're, we're confident in the four hundred thousand number we have. If, 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 if over the next few weeks, literally, we have a better sense of having more available, then we'll definitely put that in the mix. And, and that'll be, you know, up in the adjustment section of, of this. And something in the lower section will be able to, to come out. And, and so we'll, we'll definitely do that. But at the moment, we don't.
Thank you. Anyone else have some?
Me.
Questions about revenue or ways to put more revenue into the?
Yeah, so seconding, seconding what Bridgette said, I think it's, there's still time to go to Amherst College and UMass and say, we'll put your name on anything that you want, you put your name on, we'll put your name on. You know, they like to endow chairs at these kinds of institutions. I do believe that they're both, the chancellor and the president of each of these institutions is in a different place than previous ones were. And a little bit of money will get us through to that golden twenty-twenty-seven where we hope to start saving some money on.
Operating.
Operating costs.
So, yeah, thank you.
There's, and I had another question. So our enrollment is down from the previous year by sixty-some odd students. Is there?
That was incorrect. It's only for next year or the, I got figures today.
You got figures today? I.
Yeah.
Looking at the nine eighty-three from the budget book compared to what DSE has for last year, which was over a thousand. No? No?
Well, this, this isn't part of the public record, so I wasn't going to.
Yeah, no.
No, Shannon sent me a. Anyway.
My bad.
Proceed, let's pretend I don't have any information.
Okay, so is our enrollment down? And what does that translate to in terms of saved operating costs?
So if, if you'll allow me for a moment, I'll pull up the DSE website where it has the October numbers, which are, you know, the ones they use to calculate our chapter seventy-eight. So I'll, I'll bring this up, we can step through a couple of years and sort of see the trends there. Generally speaking, our trends enrollment have been fairly flat. What's difficult with enrollment is, is it tends to decline somewhat smoothly. And you, the, the ability to sort of decrease things tends to go in steps. Like if you think about, oh, a classroom, right? I, I can reduce a classroom. But you need, you know, twenty or so fifth graders to not be there to suddenly move a fifth grade class. So that's the tricky thing is that, you know, that, that. And, and with fewer buildings, you get a little more efficient. So you have a little, you know, that's part of the economy of, of having two versus three buildings that will get, that will be helpful to us forever as far as structurally is concerned. We'll just be a little more efficient that way. But if you give me just a second, I'll pull up the state website. We'll, we'll step into those for just a second. We'll, we'll just double check the numbers, make sure I'm, I'm not going to tell you any stories that aren't true. On the array a little bit while I'm navigating. But if you go to the DSE website, there's a, sort of on any given page or the upper right, there's a thing called school profiles. And you can look at specific schools or districts. And, and you can pull up all sorts of data relative to schools, a lot of demographic data. And particularly the enrollment type data is, 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 is related to the October one numbers. There are a few caveats to understand about what it does with regard to the, to the numbers that it's showing there. It's mostly students that are in our buildings, which is not necessarily what we're fully responsible for financially. So there's a, there's a few little nuances there. It's usually, that difference is not a huge number in, in, for us. It's, 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 but it is, you know, there, there are times you will see numbers that vary a little bit and you're like, well, wait a minute. They, they gave us this for the number of special ed students. And it's like, well, how those get counted is a little different, different places. So I will, I will give that caveat a little bit. Let me just share this and, and walk you through where we're at.
And you can tell us if the declines, are there any reductions in classrooms projected for next year?
So what I'm showing here is, is the numbers for the October of twenty-twenty-four. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Fiscal twenty-four, October twenty-twenty-three numbers. I'll make it a little larger to make it a little easier to read.
Doug, is it nine eighty-three in that bottom corner?
Let's read it twelve.
Okay. No, that's just elementary.
Right, but this district only has pre-K to, pre-K to six students. So ninety-three is the total. If I scroll to the top, we can step back a year. They're showing a thousand fifty. Ten fifty-three for the year before.
Seems, it seemed to me like it was down by a hundred over the last, I don't know, eight years or some.
And then ten twenty-nine in fiscal twenty-two. So it's gone up and down. It's a little lower this year, clearly. It does vary some. What I've seen as far as just general trends for us in enrollment is that there's been some leveling, you know, we've gotten smaller over the years. And my expectations is that, you know, that our, our level of student population will be fairly steady. I think we'll see some variances like we're seeing here at ninety-three and, and ten twenty. And, you know, those are not atypical, depends on a particular year and birth class and that sort of thing. You know, the, the thing that I'm looking at as far as why I think we'll be somewhat steady over the coming years is the fact that, you know, there's been some additional housing added in, in, in the town and some of it being affordable housing, which tends to attract families that are younger and have children in their elementary age. Your programs coming back online at the university after having been reduced over the last few years and they're coming back. And then there's a housing complex that, that they renovated and expanded a little bit, which often has some students for us as well. So, so all of those things are working, both in the positive and the negative for us and, and a lot of areas. So it's, it, it is an area we're looking at, we will continue to look at. As far as the question about how many classrooms we have, actually we're plus one for the coming year. And the, and part of that is because, I mean, the simple way to describe it is that with the Common Antis program, we, when we add that program to one more year, it guarantees three in that, in that grade level. that grade level at Fort River. And so that technically adds one kind of overall classroom to the whole program. We're not seeing, we're anticipating that the, you know, essentially, the number of sections of sixth grade versus the number of sections of incoming kindergarten wash out.
Thank you. I wonder if we can wrap this up. I think there's a sense that we would like you to look very hard at some other option. What's the next best option after, if we don't cut the instrumental music? I also have the sense that people were satisfied with the explanation about the special education.
You know, these are difficult conversations to get to. And once you sort of get to the number that is bad enough, that we sort of stop and have not explored what's next if you were going to make another cut, because it's likely something decidedly more uncomfortable than this.
That would help us decide.
Right.
You know.
You know, I'll go back and pose the question and share that with you all. You know, there are, you know, there are other, you know, there's not really room in custodial. I mean, we're reducing that back to a level we were at a few years ago. I think that makes some sense. You know, in recent years, we've reduced intervention teaching, teachers that provide supports and augmented materials to kids that are needing to catch up in their grade level. We've reduced ELL over the last couple of years. So the opportunity to reduce any of those things, I think when you look at, you know, the next thing you look at is, not the next thing you look at, a thing you look at that often is, first on people's list is central office and school administration. And those are really difficult at this point. We run very, very lean at present. We're looking to reduce that even further, which is why that's at the top of the list of things that are going to be reduced, is that we needed to make significant reductions in both this budget and others. And so, you know, we knew that that would be the case. It gets difficult to get all the tasks done. So, you know, in as much as I was saying, the particular status of the business office and that is an artifact of, you know, lived experience of not getting things accomplished quite the way we were and should have been doing. So Neil's saying it's not going to be an easy sort of task. If you all, in looking through the line-by-line, see things or have questions, feel free to forward those to me and we can address, you know, why they are what they are and what went into that.
I will email you a couple of those. All right.
Is that the best plan, is to email? Because I have a couple of ideas as well, like line-by-line.
I would suggest you just send them to the superintendent, but copy me, but not to the whole committee. All right? And then we'll have to, yeah, we'll take it from there. I know it's extremely busy upcoming month. All right. How about we take a five-minute recess and then turn to the sixth-grade planning memo? I brought my own little. Nailed one. Oh, dear. Thank you for coming. I brought my own little. All right. Irv, are you out there?
I'm here.
All right. If Debbie can bring up this draft memo. And there is also a timeline. I don't think there's any way to have them both projected, so maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe the members want to just have the draft timeline open on their screens.
I need some explanation of that timeline.
Okay. Well, then maybe we'll switch. All right. I hope everyone had a chance to look at this. Should have said draft. Sorry about that. So what, so at our last meeting, we raised the issue of deciding on a plan for moving sixth graders to the regional middle school, since that has to be done by the time the new elementary school opens, because there will not be room for them in the elementary And the planning was put on hold for a while. And it's, we think it's time to get going again. And the committee asked us to, us being Irv and me, to develop a proposal or something. So this is our proposal. And so we want, hopefully, to agree on changes or come to an agreement on a memo like this that we can then pass on to the interim superintendent and say, "Here's your marching orders." All right. So is everybody looking at the timeline on their own screens? Okay. I had to do this for my own benefit. So the color indicates the fiscal year. But every row is a different calendar year. So right now, we are in the second blue box in the top. Okay? Because it's February of calendar year 2024. And we are in the fiscal year of 2024. So July will start the fiscal year 2025. All right? That extends until June 30th of the next year. So that's what's going on there.
Can I offer one quick comment?
Oh, dear. Yes.
So just a detail, where you have the passing of the budgets, that's going to get moved to March in every circumstance, because we have to approve them in March. Because they, we have to have a budget to the, in Amherst, the budget has to be to the town manager by April 1, by Charter. And then for the regional school district, we have to move in March, because the regional agreement says that we need to have our budget 40 days before the first town meeting. The first town meeting is typically the last Saturday in April. And so when you do sort of 40 days, that gets you back around the middle of March most of the time.
Okay, thanks. I didn't know what town meetings were.
Yep.
Okay. So, right. So even, all right. So bump up everything that's under April, we'll put it under March. So we have been considering generally two possible start dates. That is when sixth graders would begin their sixth grade in the middle school, either in August of calendar year 2025, that's in green, or the following year, calendar year 2026. That's when the elementary, new elementary school opens. All right? So I've also put in, given the information from the superintendent about when Desi would need to, excuse me, we would need to give Desi any revisions to the regional agreement, if that's what we want to do, if we want to regionalize the sixth grade, only for Amherst perhaps. The other towns could make their own choice about that. That regional agreement has to be given to Desi the December of the year before the students would start. All right? So if we want to start sixth grade at the middle school in August of 2025, we have to get a revised regional agreement, again, if that's the option we want, to Desi by December of this year. And I've never participated in opening and renegotiating a regional agreement. Just because Desi would allow limited changes doesn't mean the other towns would, wouldn't perhaps want to make a good number of other changes. All right. So that's why Desi's there. Also, when the planning was undertaken a couple of years ago, there was the goal of having a whole year to prepare the fifth graders for their move, for being in the middle school the following year, which means the fifth graders, or even at the end of their fourth grade year, they need to know that that, or at least we wanted them to know, that that would be the plan. So, for example, if we want to have start date one, if we want sixth graders to move to the middle school in August of 2025, we would be informing those same students who are now fourth graders before the end of this school year. Or maybe not until they begin fifth grade, but in any case, they, we wanted to give them a long heads-up, or the school committee wished to do that. We don't have to stick to that. We can spring it on people, but that was the plan as I understand it. All right? So does anyone have questions about the timeline? Jennifer?
Thank you for making this and in this way and color-coded. It's super helpful. Would we decide on start date one or start date two separately from deciding whether to have a sixth-grade academy or regionalize? And the reason I ask is that, like, hypothetically, we could inform fourth graders this May about start one, but we wouldn't be negotiating the regional agreement until later this year. And what if that didn't work? What if it didn't, like, so would we inform fourth graders hypothetically in May, "You're going to go to the middle school building next year," but not yet know if it's going to be academy or regional? Or would we want to know which one we're going to go with before we inform the fourth grade?
That is a good question. And one of the questions somewhere in this draft memo is, is it even, is it even reasonable to keep start date one as an option, either, you know, maybe either way? Maybe, maybe it's not reasonable if we want to regionalize. Maybe it's okay if we want an academy, but if we want to give a year, yeah, a year's heads-up. It would be, I think it would be awkward not to be able to tell parents what it is, exactly what the model or the experience would be. But that's for us to decide.
And also, I just, I agree with informing fourth graders before the end of the school year, so May or June. What's, what's, what I don't.
Next year will be their last.
Yeah, yeah. What I don't want is for fifth graders to start and not realize or not know, "This is going to be my last year in this school." They should know that for that whole year of fifth grade. Irv?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of whether it's an academy or regionalization, really, the question, the really main concern would be, hey, am I going to the middle school or not going to the middle school? The model, the curriculum model, or whatever they're going to be moving into is secondary to that, not secondary in relationship to the staffing and other that. But in terms of students, the reality is, hey, am I going, what date am I going to be going to the middle school? That is the primary question in parents' minds and in students' minds.
I'm not sure I entirely agree with that. I think families might feel differently about sixth grade as part of a middle school experience. I don't know. But I also wonder whether, in fact, we would have the same teaching model that was developed for an academy if it was going to be a regionalized.
But, but, but the reality is that the sixth grade is going to have to go to the middle school unless there's some other model that I don't know about.
No, but it might be a year, it might not be until the fall of 2026.
Yeah. What I'm saying, it doesn't matter whether it's '25 or '26 or '27, '25 or '26. What does matter is that they are going to be going to the middle school. That matters. And then what models, you know, parents would obviously like to know, whether it's going to be academy or whether it's going to be regionalized, what's going to be there. But more importantly to the parents and the students is, hey, am I going to be in the middle school? Yes, you're going to be in the middle school.
Deb?
I have a lot of trouble with this. What's this? With the move entirely. I under- I understand there's an educational model and in an ideal Amherst, I wouldn't have a problem with that if it were a continuous part of the development of our school district. But I feel like what's driving this is the school building instead of an educational model. And no, maybe that might be not entirely true because there are reasons to include the sixth grade in a middle school. But the time pressure is such that it's because we're we won't have room for the sixth grade in the buildings. And for that reason, combined with the fact that we haven't had the kind of stability in leadership at the middle school, that an academic program, that I would like to see an academic program have when you're adding a sixth grade to it, plus the fact that we don't have a clear sense of who's going to be leading the, or we don't have any sense of who's going to be leading the district at that time, it just, all of it is is problematic to me. So the further we get away from a permanent solution would be better. So to me, a regionalized negotiation would be the most cost effective part of it since we wouldn't want a separate administrative team. But that's re-regionalizing seems to me like a really big step when we just really don't know who we're dealing with, what administrators we're dealing, what strengths there are, what assistant superintendent we have. We have so many, so much transition in central office as well as in that building over many, many years, that it just, all of it is really troublesome to me.
I would say, first of all, it's it's the committee's responsibility to decide the appropriate educational model. And I was on, as a member of the community, obviously because this was finished up just before the pandemic started, I was part of an advisory group made up of parents, I was there as a parent and, you know, administrators and teachers and from elementary school and middle school to talk through the issues, first from a developmental and educational point of view. And there's there's there never ended up being a formal report because of the pandemic, but there is a slide deck that Superintendent Morris had shared, and I think I'd link to that in that chronology I developed. I would also say that one thing that became clear to that advisory group, maybe no secret to to school administrators, is that six, seven, eight is by far the most common middle school model. And we are one of very few districts to keep sixth grade in elementary school. So it's not an outlandish thing to do, and it seems to be, and I'm speaking from what I remember, not not, you know, any officially, that it is well justified. That, all right. And thirdly, I would say that we hire administrators for the schools we think our kids need. You know, we can't adjust our educational goals to fit our staff. We need to hire the people who will lead the the school system that we develop.
I understand that that looks great on paper, but in reality, we don't have a building, a well-established building with a well-established administration, and to add a new educational plan to that, to put 11-year-olds in that building is very concerning to me.
Okay. Anyone else? Bridgette?
So the first thing that I'm thinking about is just the cost, right? Because that's how we spent the first half of the meeting. And I'm wondering, since the absolute date is the following year, if it makes sense for fiscal reasons to go with the with the second year, right?
Start start date two, you're saying?
Yes. That's so that's just one thought. The second thing is, we all know that right now it's going to be very hard to lead this community into the middle school with the middle school we have. So I do want to support what Deb's saying, even though I agree as well with Sarah, the leadership is ours. But in order to do that, we've got, there's needs to be healing at the middle school, there needs to be leadership at the middle school, and there needs to be a sense of a renaissance or rejuvenation at the middle school so people will feel safe to send their, you know, their their word. This is their most precious resource, right? We all love our children more than anything, and I know even with the seventh grade at that point, a lot of people have apprehension, like, am I going to the middle school or will I go private? Or will I do something else? Will I charter? So we lose families at that point anyway. So I I think taking our time is important.
So we've been focusing on the timeline. I'd like to, if we can, turn to the this draft memo and, oh, Jennifer.
No, no.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if you were still on the timeline. So I solicit comments about this draft memo. And I I will eventually ask for the superintendent's opinions specifically, or at least with regard to our request in this draft, that he come back with the with this information and plan in March. So that may not be reasonable. On the other hand, we need to really get moving. So Jennifer?
First, thank you for stating it was a draft because I was actually confused when I saw it on Board Doc.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So there's in the on page two, when you say you asked the interim superintendent to supply, there's nothing about the regional agreement, I don't think, in this memo. I mean, it talks about requesting that the regional school committee permit arms educate on the previous page, permit arms educators and administrators to explore regional issues with Amherst educators. But there's nothing in the memo about the regional agreement and about how the regional agreement will go about being changed and what is needed. And I don't even I don't even think we know yet, I don't know, what changes will be needed to the regional agreement and who negotiates those changes. Like, I don't think the school committee, I think that, I don't even know. So anyway, I think that needs to be added to the memo. And just back to the timeline, I know we're on the memo, but just back to the timeline, I feel like I I'm hearing what everyone's saying about concerns about this, but the fact is, this train has left the station and it has to, we have to do it. And can we do it in the in a way that's best for the community, that honors people's concerns and that is transparent as possible? I personally am leaning towards, would lean towards regionalization as opposed to the sixth grade academy. Because I think the sixth grade academy just, it's 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 an odd model. It's hard for people to understand. It will be hard to have an administration administrative team. What's going to happen to the orchestra if some of the sixth graders are in the middle school building? Like, I'm just, I'm leaning towards the regionalization model. That being said, I think that we could we could stick with negotiations, negotiate revisions to the regional agreement in the purple year in fiscal 25 and go with start date two, so that we can inform fourth grade in the purple year in fiscal 25, and inform students and families what it is that's actually going to happen when they with start date two. So anyway, that's, I'm just throwing that in there. I think we should do all the legwork as soon as possible, but also push the start date to as late as it could be.
So maybe I misunderstand. You're saying we could start, we could open the agreement?
This year.
This year. And it might get done for for start date one, but it might not, and that's okay?
Yeah.
Because maybe
I think it shouldn't, I think we shouldn't do start date one.
Uh huh.
I think we should negotiate this year, inform fourth graders in May of next year.
Next year.
Can I provide a little?
Yes.
So
Give us a
I'll give you a little information I've gathered on regional agreement and the change to that process. So I had a, I looked over a regional agreement, sent a copy to the state. There are a couple of folks in the state that particularly deal with this issue and and had a subsequent conversation with them. They sent me some more materials back, which I've not had as much chance to review, and then a subsequent email to that after conferring, because the the sort of two people that do this, one was out the day I had the phone call with them. So they sort of conferred after sending me some things and and sent me some additional Just practically speaking, as far as the the nature of opening a regional agreement and working with with the communities to make changes to it and approval at the state level. So the process of making any change, then we need to send it to, so separate from town approval part, which I'll get back to, but just the mechanics of what the state has to do. So you have to have the commissioner sign off of it. And what's part of that process is making sure that as you go through the steps and you offer change, that you send that to the state, they review it, they run it through their legal department, and they bring that back to you. We don't dictate how fast they work. And and so that's going to be, you know, a piece that, you know, I can pose some more questions about what that looks like, but generally speaking, it's it's not the fastest thing. And they want you to work in an iterative way, generally speaking, because that that's a little better than, if we made 27 changes and then sent them all in one big block, it's going to take them a really long time to sort of go through that. If you're working in an iterative way, saying, oh, we need to make this change, we're thinking about this change, and here's the sort of outline of things we're thinking about, and you work iteratively, that's probably a little quicker, but it's still a lengthy process.
So what is this December due date? Would that be like the last date to submit?
So
The last date to submit?
So for the the December date is, you need to have it submitted to the to Desi for review by the commissioner so that he, because it's Jeff Riley, signs off on it as okay by the by the end of December, preceding the following fiscal year's start. So it would have to probably be to them by beginning of December because they'll do one last legal review and, you know, the folks that I spoke to probably do really the nitty gritty work to to review it and then talk to the commissioner and say, yes, you can sign off on this, it's okay. So I think that, you know, that's that process to legitimately, I think, take up the the regional agreement is a pretty lengthy one. I don't think, I would be shocked if we would be able to go through that by December of 2024. I would think that would be nearly impossible, given the number of other things we're we're simultaneously sort of keeping in mind here.
Right.
So I just want to make that clear. I think there's some other things about what kind of modification we can make. There are a number of places, you know, part of what I reviewed with them was the sort of status. We haven't updated our regional agreement since 2008, I think. And so, you know, there are some regional districts that haven't since the 80s. So, you know, all things considered, we have a number of things in place. There's a few things that they would want us to clean up that we need to do. Those are much more straightforward, you know, things like the fact that Amherst has a town council instead of a select board and town meeting, that's a pretty straightforward change, yet it would still need to be reviewed, the language changes and those things, minor, but still part of the process. The more substantial things would be around, you know, when when adding a grade level, how that's done, what and how you describe any changes to assessment methods, that's an area we'd need to review and fix anyway. So so I, again, I think, you know, there's more for me to review and get back to you on. And I think just, you know, in the conversations I had, I think, to between now, which is, you know, mid-February and the end of 2024, I think it'd be extraordinarily difficult to be in place by that timeframe for a regional agreement change.
So that would suggest that we just forget about start date one.
If we're going to consider the regional agreement, right?
Yes. Yes. So, okay. So start date one will not be, you're saying is basically impractical if for under the regionalized model. All right. But we could, we could pursue the academy model starting in August of 2025, or or both models for the following year. So what the part of what this memo is asking for is, is like similar information about those two models so that we can, you know, as soon as we can decide what our preference is, you know, we should do that. On the other hand, if we're putting all our eggs into the regional basket and I don't know, if the other towns, you know, they refuse to sign off on it, then we're stuck. So that's that's the dilemma now, is that I don't, I don't think that we know enough to say what which model we prefer. So we have to pursue both. And the start date is another issue. Does anyone disagree with that?
You know, here's the question I have is, is if if we pursued both of them at the same time, can we pursue both of them at the same time? And what would be the issues surrounding that? Because if we're talking about the regionalized model, that really, you know, given what Doug says and and given what, you know, we know that we also have to go through a town process, that that model needs to be started like as soon as possible if we're going to pursue it in in any timely fashion. The other thing that is really important to me is that we, this school committee, needs to make a decision as soon as possible on which way we're going to go. Either we go, either we go both at the same time or we choose one. But we can't, we can't keep putting off making that decision. That has to be made as soon as possible.
Well, then I will draw your attention to the very first paragraph, which says, our goal is to pursue both models until we have more certainty about what is possible financially, legally, politically, and logistically. All right. I mean, I
Since you pointed that out, Sarah, I I believe it would be really good if that is codified by this school committee, i.e. that we agree with that. You know, this is our proposal in terms of outlining it, but do we as a school committee agree with that?
Bridgette?
So a question that I would have in needing to make the decision is really related to the team-based model. There's just so much research about how beneficial the team-based model is at middle school and having the teachers follow the students for those years. So then, if we're bringing in our sixth grade teachers and asking them to follow them for three years, do they need different certifications? What are all the logistical ins and outs so that, is it even feasible? So those are some of the things I think that I'm thinking about. Regionalization would be important to me because that's one of the real benefits of that middle school. And when the middle school was working well, which it was just a few years ago, my son had an amazing experience there, that was that was sort of the heart of it, was the teams.
So are you suggesting, because I need to edit this, I hopefully, we're going to agree on a set of changes and I can finalize this and then just give it to the superintendent. So so far, I think I have the sense that we agree that start date one is not practical for under the regional model. All right. And we also have the question of how, how is a regional agreement negotiated? Who does it? What will be required? Are you, I would say, on the second page, one of the types of information requested is the estimated FTEs for an academy. So I was thinking administrative, but your point is more broadly how this, what the staffing model would be and how it would impact the elementary schools.
I mean, if it's an academy, it's fairly straightforward, except you'll need probably a new principal and maybe an AP and the, you know, the counselors and whatnot like that. So how's all that going to work? But if it's going to be part of the middle school, then you've got to think about whether you're continuing the team model and if there's impacts in terms of the the rotation of the grades and so forth.
Okay. Maybe I lost the thread. If they're sixth graders in the academy model, they're sixth graders. So are you referring, when you say the team, do you mean the elementary team? Are you talking about the middle school?
I'm saying if they regionalize, if they
Right.
If it's not an academy, if it's an integrated middle school, what it, what's the model going to look like educationally in that case?
Right. So we do have educational model
Okay.
And the degree of integration with the seventh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So any other changes? Any other changes people would like to see?
I, I just, for me, the goal, I really would like to get a sense of this committee in terms of that goal, in terms of pursuing both models at the same time. Because that, because that really guides us. If there's no agreement on that, then there's, then we have to go back and figure out how we're going to go forward. Right now, I'm not sure how we go forward if we don't agree on that goal of pursuing both at the same time.
All right, then I'll ask explicitly, is everyone agree with, for the moment, until we know more, pursuing both models? Or asking for information that would help us? Yes?
I mean, pursuing both, I don't, I don't think we should pursue both models, but I think we should discuss, discuss the models, and as a committee, determine which model to choose. My suggestion would be to submit this memo, have Doug respond for our March meeting, have it as a good portion of our March meeting, get public input, and then vote in April, as to which model to choose.
Oh, all right.
And that way, we can pursue the model that we choose.
Right, say that last part again, the-
I would suggest that we get, we get, we get as much information, we request the information from Doug or whoever, we get it for the March meeting, we discuss it at the March meeting, we have this as a big chunk of our March meeting, where we also get input from the public, and then we discuss and deliberate in March, and then we vote in April.
So I thought you had said first, we just give the memo to Doug and ask for his modifications, but you mean, here's the memo, please give us what information you can in March, and then we'll discuss it, and the public can comment? And you hope that we could have enough information to decide-
In March.
In April, you said.
In April, sorry. It's okay. Yeah, we would, we would, we would discuss it in one meeting, and then at the next meeting, discuss it again and vote, so that we, so that we're not springing it on people and voting in one meeting. And the memo is requesting information from Doug, right? So-
Right, but, so, but this is where I then want to ask Doug, is this a reasonable ask of you? Given all the budget work that is happening?
Right, the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Amherst meeting in March is the 19th, is that correct? It's going to be a little difficult, to be perfectly honest, given what we have to do for the other, the regional budget in particular, the panel budgets in, in a much more steady state. I think the other thing is there are some other things that are, are on our horizon that we need to attend to in the month of March. So as part of the Student Opportunity Act, there's a plan we have to put together. It's not necessarily thousands of pages or anything, but there is a need for you as a committee to review and vote on that in the month of March, and, because it has to be submitted to the state on April 1st. So that's another piece there that will-
It's not negotiable.
Needs some, yeah, that one, the timeline's fixed, right? And the budget approvals are fixed. So to have this ready for the 19th of March would be pretty hard, I think, to really give it a level of detail that I think you're going to want and need. There are a couple of options. We could, we could schedule a second meeting in March, not on a Tuesday, because all those are already booked with yourselves and others. But we could potentially pick something a little later in March to go over this. That would be, you know, an opportunity to more fully address the questions you have, and put that in a coherent, you know, sort of format for you guys to review and evaluate. But I think that that would be what I might suggest, is maybe have an additional meeting in March, but a little later in the month that allowed for you a little more time to put this all together.
Okay, but if that means that you, like, no work can be done on this until March 20th, then that doesn't give you very much time to pull all this together. So another option is just to delay Jennifer's proposed schedule by a month, you know, bring it to us in April. But then my question is, do you think you would be able to respond to all these requests by then?
So I'll, I'll offer the following.
And will we?
A couple of things regarding to that. So it's likely that I'll work on this simultaneously with some other things, you know, because like I said, I have some information around the regional agreement questions, and some things we can do and can't do, and that's available. So as time allows, we'll wedge that into the work, right? I'm also reminded of a quote of, of a friend of my brother's that says, "Work expands to fill time allotted." So it wouldn't be a circumstance where I'd wait till the, you know, till the 20th to start this, by any stretch. There's some of this, there's a ton of this that has been looked at in the past, and so it's refreshment of some of the information we already have. And, and there are aspects of it that, when we last went through this, I personally didn't interact with, it wasn't part of what I needed to do, and so I'm not as familiar, so I have to get up that learning curve. So there's a couple of pieces there. I think it's, you know, I think the earliest I would suggest that we could do is sort of the latter part of March, if you want to push that back and, and, you know, review response to this memo in April and vote either late April on a special meeting, or in May, that's your call. You know, I think to Irv's point, the urgency is high, and the sooner you can decide, the better. And I do think, though, that some things will be made very, very clear as we go through putting this together. So I think the, the choice will start to be a lot more, I think, clear-cut as to what is really feasible in the timeframes we have, and the possibilities are open to us, and that sort of thing. But at the same time, you know, like I said, I think we can get it together by the end of March, but if you, you know, are comfortable with pushing it a month, I'll take the extra time.
I would just like, Jennifer-
I was going to say, I think, April, May would be fine, if we push it a month. But can I, can I suggest that I'm adding something to the memo, which is, I want to ask Doug to make a recommendation. What, what do you think we should do? And then we will take that information, we will take that recommendation into account. You know, based on everything, based on everything you pulled together, what's your recommendation? And then we will take that recommendation under account.
Although that wouldn't yet have had the benefit of community input. So, okay.
Right, no, from a, I would probably, whether you ask for it or not, I'd probably offer that.
So we don't need to-
But nonetheless, yeah, but, but, you know, obviously, for you to make a decision, then that community input, and maybe my reaction to that community input, and others, you know, administrators and staff's reaction to that input, will be important to you as well. So, so I do think that, you know, kind of iterative part of the process can be highly valuable to you, too.
Thank you. Bridget?
It's just a really quick thing, which is, are the other towns willing or interested? Because that could either, that could make a big difference. And I really think that circles back to the situation at our middle school. Like, we have to sooner rather than later be showing like that the conditions that are really healing and moving forward. You know, I don't know, that's, I guess that's like a direction, Doug, like, anything you can do to make that middle school like really more cohesive, and having people get along together, so we're not in the newspaper, you know, could really help this endeavor.
I'm hoping Jennifer is about to offer her experience from discussing this at the regional level.
And, I don't, I don't, I don't-
Oh, well-
I don't know, but I was going to say, what Bridget said puts me in favor of start date two, because, again, the purple year, fiscal '25, is, will hopefully be the first year of the new middle school principal. The green year would be the middle school principal's second year, and so it gives them a chance for two years in the middle school to do, to do all the good things before we spring on them something new.
Right, surprise. Okay, I'm, I wasn't on school committee, obviously, and this is not the regional meeting, but what I think I remember from watching video, from recordings, is that the smaller towns, I mean, they might be concerned about the educational model, but they also have some real financial concerns pertaining to their, maintaining their elementary schools. So the decision, they may have other factors to weigh than just what'll it be, what's it going to be like? But again, they'll, they'll speak for themselves. Irv?
No, I agree with you in terms of what you're saying, Sarah. The other towns will have issues that, and concerns they want to bring forward, and, you know, they may, in terms of reality, opt out, not to send their kids to the, to the middle school. A, and B, we would have to cross a path with their membership to any kind of financial obligations that might be forthcoming with this.
All right, so with your permission, I will make a few changes we've discussed, and just send it on to Doug, and to, and I'll copy you all, but then how do I put it back? Do I attach it to this agenda? Just to the next agenda, for the record? What do I?
I think that would be great, but the other thing is that we need to, when we, you know, we don't just leave this on the table, that we make, have an agreement that we are going to either have an extra meeting in March, and then bring it into April, or do it in April and come back and make a decision to make. But we need to make, have that decision timeline put in place to guide us.
Yes, I think, is everyone content with having a vote at a May meeting? No later than our May meeting? Our May meeting, which is the 21st? And whether we have the preceding meeting in late March, or at our regular April meeting, we can, we can work that out. Okay. All right, and I'll figure out how to, how to make the final version.
Oh, I'll suggest this, is, you know, once you get the final version, obviously, send it to me, because it's a memo to me, but what I would suggest is just to attach it to the chair's update in the next meeting as a-
Good idea. Okay.
An awareness that the, the final version is, is there, and then you can just mention that in passing when you do a chair's update.
Thank you. Good idea. All right. All right, then, let's move on to second quarter budget update.
Make sure this presents well. No, it's about as good as it's going to present. All right, I'll walk you through this, and I'll mostly spend, I'll mostly keep on screen the, the sort of colors, because that's the easy part to, to, to look at. So the short story is, for, through the second quarter of the year, our, you know, our budget's in, in pretty good shape. You know, as far as the totality of where we are versus our budget, we're still, you know, we're, we're under 40% of spending versus budgeted funds. You know, there are some areas that are really, you know, jump out in, in concern, and, and some that, that are, are much less so. Speaking of salaries, we're, we're a little under where we would normally be for this time of year on those. I think the contracted salaries are, are sort of on target, they're about 52%. We usually spend a little bit more, because a bunch of those are summer work, which happens right at the very beginning of the fiscal year, so when we do summer school and that sort of thing, those are, often a lot of those are contracted services, or contracted salaries for folks. So that's part of why that's a little more near 50%. It tends to be a little quieter during this part of the year, and, and yet, we still have that kind of trickling along. In our, in our main salary line, it's, it's at 37.8%, I think, if I read it, yeah, 37.8%, which is a little lower than we would expect for this point in the year. Now, again, remember that, you know, the teaching staff start, you know, teaching staff, and our pair of educators start in September, and so, or actually, late August, but, you know, so they're, they're a little less of the total cost here at this point than would be the case, which is why we wouldn't expect it to be at exactly 50% at the midpoint. But at the same time, we're a little below our target. And part of that is, you know, as we talked earlier about, about whether we've been able to fill open positions, and when we don't, when we use contracted services to cover those needs at times, and so, we're likely to have some resource in that section of our budget as we go through the rest of the year, because we've, you know, even if you hire somebody in November, you've got September, October, and whatever part of November that you didn't pay that salary. So that's a resource that's available for use elsewhere in, in your budget later on. And as, as Dr. Brady pointed out, you know, oftentimes with, with contracted services, they are more expensive. We always have some level of contracted services, because there are certain things we just, you know, that are so specialized, or, or, or an extraordinary need of some sort, that we just can't meet with our own staff. If we're, even if we're fully staffed, we will have some need for contracted services. There's things that, you know, and, and in that circumstance, they're, they're not, you know, on a per hour basis, yes, they're more expensive, but the totality of it is modest, because we only need a little bit of it. We don't need a whole year's worth of it. When we have to contract services for long stretches of time, then it's much more expensive. This is part of why we have developed those in-house programs for Intensive Learning Center and, and the Ames Program Building Blocks, because having our staff, besides the enrichment of the program and its ability to integrate those kids that live in our town into our schools, and provide them the special education needs they have, it's a, it's an efficient and, and cost-effective model for us. However, when we can't staff, we need contracted services, which is why you see in the district-wide special education that we're at a really largely over-budget number. And so, the resources that are going to remain in salary, because we haven't had to pay people that we haven't hired, can be leveraged and used for that. It's likely we'll need some resources from some other areas in the budget, in the other expense lines, to help support that area. Likewise, we see that down in the facilities section as well, we'll need some support for that area of the budget, from some other areas in there. You know, we've had a fairly mild winter, so, you know, that's why utilities are currently really low, partly because, you know, the heating oil that we use, and the gas that we use, and that sort of thing. You know, some of those bills haven't come in yet, because it's, you know, still February, and the level of use is probably a little lower as well, so we haven't had to, to buy as much either. So that may be an area that we have resource that, that can help our other expenses and facilities, and likewise. The English language education, obviously, it's showing at 100%. The thing to note there is that we've encumbered a large amount, but our actual spending's not too bad. And, you know, it's over budget by less than $1,000, which in, out of 25 billion, it's pretty, that's, those are not the things that keep me up at night. Let me just say that, you know, we can find $1,000 in, in the course of, of the rest of the year to cover that. I think the real key there is, that we're going to keep an eye on, is whether or not what we've encumbered to provide, largely like translation-type services are going to materialize as actual needs. It's always a difficult thing to project, because, you know, it, it's sometimes dependent upon what languages we have, and sometimes it depends on which, what students we have, regardless of language, as to how much need we have in some of those areas. So it is, is, you know, one of those things that, that we, we will continue to monitor as we go through the rest of the year. I think the long story short, overall, the budget's in pretty good shape. There are a couple of these areas that have a high level of spending, understood why that's the case. At this moment in time, we feel like we've got the resources to cover that, and we'll, you know, as is the case generally, we can come back to you in May or June, and ask you to move some things around, because to move between these sort of lines of budget area requires your approval to do. We'll come back with some guesses and some adjustments from, for you to take into consideration in, in either May or, or June, to sort of balance this out. But I think the, the overall health of the budget is good. As I said earlier, talking about our coming budget, and the question of SRR funds, you know, again, in this, in this picture, there's about $550,000 of, of SRR funds to support this budget. And so, you know, if, if we find that we continue to be under budget in some of these areas, that allows us to perhaps preserve some of those, and, and use them in, in fiscal '25. What I'm hopeful is we can figure that out in some, to some level of confidence, to help us, you know, with our, with our current shortfall for fiscal '25, but we'll see. May not have enough clarity by the time we have to make a decision, that's the hard thing. The, but I will, I will say this, we will spend all of those SRR dollars, one way or the other, because we have to by, you know, September 30th, but, but we'll spend them, which will then perhaps give us flexibility during the course of next year to do certain things, because we've, you know, freed up some other resources. But it's better to know it earlier and budget for it than the other way around.
Yeah, Deb, you look like you have a question.
It's a naive question, because I know the answer's no, but I'm going to ask anyway. That $70,000 for food service, that is 0%, is the same- That $70,000 for food service, that is 0% is the same as the cost of the instrumental music pro FTE.
And why have we spent nothing on food service?
So what I'll say is this about that. So we have traditionally budgeted a small amount of, um, appropriation budget to help cover expenses of our food service program. With universal free meals, we've had less need of that. We've had better reimbursement, our, we've served more meals, or because all the meals are free, we serve more meals, they get cheaper when you do it. There's an economy of scale that is, and so the health of our revolving fund related to, uh, food service is in good shape. In fact, it's the audit that we're going through currently because they audit us every three years and this is the year, um, will, will scold us a bit for holding too much cash on hand. We are not alone. A lot of districts are in the same place because, um, you know, the, the, you know, you sort of have this benefit of a couple of things that have really helped you out. So what that 70,000 here can do is help support this budget. So that's 70,000 that we're not going to spend to support our food service because we've got enough sort of cash on hand there, means that 70 is available to help offset that district wide special education, et cetera. I- i- as far as a, uh, as far as fiscal 25 is concerned, we've reduced that number by about 90%, so it's only about $7,500 that we're going to put into the budget. We wanted to keep that line and it would have to be spent, um, if we were going to use, uh, food service, uh, revolving fund, it has to be spent on food service costs. So it can't true, support us that way. And there's not really anything in the main part of the budget around food service that, that, uh, we could sort of reduce.
Thank you for that very gentle no.
Any other questions? Irv, any question?
No, no, this has been good.
Okay, I did have a question. What was it? Oh, um, let's say, uh, one of those red boxes continues to bu- to balloon and there's not enough left over in the green boxes. Is this where the excess, can you pull from? I mean, what do you do? What if you end up in the red? Is this where you dip into the excess and deficiency account or?
Excess and deficiencies only at the region.
Really?
So if we don't come in under budget, we either have to go back to the town council and ask for additional appropriation from some source that they would have to identify. So that's the least comfortable place you can be in as a budget person. What we typically do is, and this is where third quarter report's really pretty critical is when we get to third quarter, uh, if we're looking at what we expect to spend, so, you know, we can project out our payroll through the rest of the year, we can project out some of the other expenses for the rest of the year. If we run into a circumstance where we start to feel like, ooh, we may run out of cash before we, we finish, we do what's called a budget freeze and so any non-essential spending stops. So, you know, we don't buy any more whiteboard markers and we don't buy any more erasers and pads of paper and, you know, that, that, all those sort of materials that are, are often things we like to support and work within our budgets, we freeze spending and things that we pay for are only things we have to. So, um, you know, we try to, in that circumstance, clamp down on our spending so that we stay within our budget.
Okay, thank you. Bridgette?
On the more optimistic side, what is the chance of any rollover? And are you allowed to do that in, you know, in these types of budgets?
So in the, in the regional budget, just a quick aside about the regional budget, sorry to, to switch, but any remaining funds roll into what's called E and D, so it becomes, or if you're talking about town finances, that becomes free cash, right? Same thing, which can be, it has to be budgeted. Um, in, in the, in this budget, um, it goes back to the town. And so, because it's not ours at that point, it's, you know, they allot us a, a budget of money. Our goal is to come in, you know, in a sort of perfect world, we'd land at $0 left over, right? And what we typically do is try to come in within a couple of percentage points of the total, um, just because that's about where we are. And the town as a whole, when they, you know, you look at the totality of, of the, uh, the Emmeris Municipal Budget, which includes us, they to try to come in within a, a couple of percentage points of the totality of what they had and, and, you know, the, uh, and again, the, the circumstance that you run into if you come in over budget is, is really, uh, it, remediating that is extraordinarily difficult. It's much easier with the council than it was with town meeting because in, in a, you know, if you're in a Leverton, Shrewsbury, Pelham, you'd have to call a town meeting to vote additional appropriation to cover the costs. So that's a really, I mean, in ours, the council can meet and, and vote. Uh, and that's presuming you have the resource in free cash or something like that, but, but, um, you know, we don't get to keep it. But they do give us the school choice. I mean, they give us some places where we have some control like that, so we have, you know, revolving accounts that we manage ourselves. We've got school choice that they, they essentially give us full control of. And so we use those to try to, uh, mitigate and, and manage our, 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 our balance sheet to, to work out in our favor and, and, um, you know, I think it's good stewards of what the town gives us. We try to come in just under budget. You know, I think last year it was about $160,000, which is, you know, out of 20, roughly $25 million budget, it's a pretty, pretty good place.
And then it goes back to, to the town's free cash? Is that what you said?
Yeah, it ultimately becomes free cash when they certify. So, um, you know, in, in the process, and this is the same for E and D, you know, you sort of close your books, you know, you find out what the actual exact revenues were for the year, you, you, uh, pay out all those last expenses and you certify sort of, you know, what your bank balances are with the state and, and, uh, and so any, you know, sort of residual of, uh, revenue minus expenses is, becomes free cash, which is, as, as people like to joke, it's neither free nor cash, but it is available at that point once it's certified to be utilized in a future budget. And so, you know, those are, you know, because that's one-time money, they tend to use it in specific ways and not, uh, support their operating budget in any, uh, sort of regular way, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we can move on to school choice. I know we were all very tired. Do people remember this discussion? Three minutes. Um, we, we currently participate in the school choice program. We only need to vote if we wish to withdraw. And while the superintendent said the state doesn't need to know until June 1st, I know that there are families who want a choice into the district if it's possible. So it would be, um, they would appreciate a decision, you know, as soon, as soon as we can make it. So let's just talk about it. I know Jennifer, there was something you wanted to.
Well, I guess I'd like to hear from committee members and the superintendent, like super high level, what are the pros and cons of being a school choice district?
Go ahead.
So I think the, the, the critical, so again, I think the state sees it as a, as a general plus if, if done right, which is why the default is to be a school choice and you have to kind of tell them that you don't want to be. There are pluses and minuses for folks. I, I think in general, um, if you manage it well so that you're accepting school choice, explicitly for the purpose of augmenting your budget and not incurring new costs by adding students, so that $5,000 you get is, is truly additive to your budget, it may not be all 5,000 that are additive, but most of it, um, it can be financially beneficial. There's some other pluses that it, that it offers as far as, you know, a potential diversity and richness of, you know, student body, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the downside is that, you know, you have to accept whomever applies and so sometimes that comes with, with expenses that you have to get reimbursed for, but there's a lagging reimbursement. And, uh, there was one other point I was going to, oh, it, it complicates traffic because you don't provide transportation for them, which doesn't incur you a, a cost, but it does incur a, a lot more drop-offs, uh, in the morning and that sort of thing. So that's the downside to it, but generally if, if you manage it well and sort of use it to augment and not add, uh, expenses, it can be a, a beneficial thing.
So maybe not. Augment so much as filling empty seats, you're already paying the teacher, so the marginal cost of a general ed student is pretty small. Jennifer?
Thanks, I appreciate that. So I, I get the concept of, as you said, filling empty seats, um, for the year that you accept this, the first year that you accept the student, you don't, you only accept students if you're, if they're filling empty seats. Have we ever done an analysis of the years after that? Do those school choice students ever result in, or, or do we ever need to add another section of a cohort that we wouldn't have needed to add if we didn't have the school choice student? You know, I mean, like we take them in that first year, but then we, they, we keep them.
Right, if more residents have sixth graders.
Right.
Yeah. And you suddenly need a new classroom. Yeah.
I'll say this, I'm not su- I don't, I don't know for certain. I don't think so. And the reason why is this, we're very, we're pretty conservative with it. So for example, um, you know, if, if a class size for a given grade is say, you know, we're thinking it should be 20 to 22, um, if we have 18 students, we'll do school choice, we'll only add two. We'll go to the bottom edge of that. That way we still have capacity in case kids move in. So we tend to be conservative on how many we add to allow for that because you never knew who's going to move to town. And we have to make, so, uh, you know, the state needs to do it by June 1st, but we also be, because you do it by lottery, you, we do that lottery basically at June. So we accept names and, and do the lottery early. So, uh, we make the decision, you know, really right in that sort of June time period, partly so people can make plans for the coming school year, but also, um, uh, so there's no, you know, indecision about where we sit with our enrollments. And then as people move in over the course of the summer, then we see how good a job we did with regard to that. But we tend to be a little on the conservative side about how many seats we add, uh, to try to avoid that problem.
I'll wait. Who else? Irv, do you have any question? Bridgette or Deb?
No question.
Go ahead, what?
I said, I, I don't have any question.
Oh, okay. All right, so I have a couple. So if you fill to the bottom of the class size in, let's say, second grade in Wildwood and then a bunch of Wildwood families move in, uh, when you accept this school choice student in June, um, are you accepting them into a particular school? And if so, do you have the flexibility to move them to a different school if your capacity is, if you've reached capacity, like oops? Yeah.
To be perfectly honest, I don't know.
Maybe it's never happened.
You, you do accept them into a particular school, so the slots that are available depend on the school and the enrollments that you know about at the time you do the, the lottery for those seats. I don't know if you had an extraordinary circumstance where a, you know, a family moved in with triplets or something and suddenly you're, you're, uh, in it and then another family moved in with kids and that, all in the same grade. And it's crazy things like that happen sometimes, so I'm not sure if you have the ability to shift at that point. You might. If they haven't started the school year, you might be able to. I think it's less flexible, um, once the year's started, but I'm not 100% certain. And, and again, the other thing is our class sizes are guidelines. And, and we try to stay within those are smaller. And as, you know, the other thing is, is if, you know, if we're over the guideline by one, that's a little more manageable than four or five, right? And as the kids get older, the class size, you know, targets get bigger, so it gets easier the following year. But I'm not 100% certain about what our flexibility is. I think we have some flexibility over the course of the summer before school starts to perhaps go, oh, sorry, we really, we can put you here versus here. I don't think we can rescind the application at that point, but we could potentially move where they are, um, but I don't know 100%. I can check on that if you want.
My other question is if, um, if a special education student choice is in, I think you said at some point, or maybe it's in the budget book, that we bill the sending district for the special ed costs. Do they pay 100%? I mean, so there's, there's no additional cost, special ed cost to us or how does that work?
Right, this, this what's called, um, student claims. So it's our responsibility to articulate what those additional costs are. Does it perfectly capture every dollar? Maybe not, but that that we do claim available costs is fully reimbursed by the sending community.
Okay. And then do they turn around and try to like decide, figure into their own circuit breaker if they're, like, might they get part of that reimbursed by the state themselves?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I mean, that's not our problem, but.
Yeah, and, and, you know, so one of the, I'll just share a, a conundrum that comes up is if you have a school choice student that maybe you've had for a couple of years and the nature of their disability manifests in a way that you start to do something like an out of district placement, then it starts to get tricky. It's like, well, do they revert back to their home district and then be a out of district student for them there or does it stay with us? And there's, those sort of, you know, ownership questions get interesting and we talk to the state a lot about that and sometimes we agree with what they say and sometimes we disagree with what they say, but it gets, it gets, uh, tricky sometimes in those circumstances. But, but generally those costs are, are borne by the towns.
Okay. And my last question is, do we typically fill all those seats? Are there, do we, is demand greater than supply for school choice?
Yes, we have more applicants than we have seats, um, uh, which is a good place to be. It's fortunate that we have that, that availability to do that. And, and we're compelled to, to hold a lottery as a result. If you were, and there are some districts that, you know, take all comers as it were, um, you're, you know, if, if you're willing to accept every student that applies, you can do that. You don't have to have a lottery, but if you do that, you have to do that for the entirety of the year and you could really, really get yourself in a bind if you suddenly had a bunch of fourth graders that wanted to suddenly show up in your, in your classroom. So, um, we do a lottery for the seats that we have. We are fortunate to have more applicants than seats. And the other good thing about that is sometimes, you know, you do the lottery and you reconnect with the family and they decide, no, we can't do that. And so that, you know, sort of moves people down the list and, and, you know, it's, it's like waiting lists for college application in some ways. So there, there are those kinds of things. And we keep and maintain that list through the rest of the year because there, there are opportunities sometimes during the year to offer another seat to, to a family and sometimes they'll take it and sometimes they won't. They won't want to make that change mid-year, but some do.
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm that, like staying or being a school choice district doesn't compel us to hold the lottery. We would still, even, we would still only do it, you would still only do it if there were seats or if you decided to, right?
Right, so, so we take applications for all grade levels because we don't specify the openings, you know, and we tell people when they apply, you know, we may or may not have any seats because we're going to take, you know, the best information we have about who's coming back from, you know, third grade for our fourth grade next year. We're, we're looking at all those to the best of our knowledge and, and trying to decide how many, how many openings do we really have, um, to offer. So we, we look at that very closely and we use that as most recent data as we can before we do that, that lottery. And sometimes we may have collected 10 applications for second grade and we say we didn't have any seats open. That happens sometimes.
Okay. All right. Does anyone wish to move to withdraw from this program? Irv?
I certainly don't wish to, I want to continue to be a part of this.
All right, okay. All right, then I think we will continue school choice. Thank you. All right, next. Oh, okay, chairs update. So I attached mine because I didn't know when we'd finish. I don't have to read it. Hopefully you've already read it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Jennifer?
Can you give us the gist of your meeting with Lynn Greasmer, Sarah Bass Kenny and Bob Hegner?
Sure. It was to, to put on the table and, you know, that everybody sees that we seem to be in a, um, in a, in a bad trend as far as school financing is concerned. And Lynn said that a few years, maybe it was just a year ago or within the last couple of years, um, that the superintendent, if I understood and recall correctly, she'd said that the superintendent was starting to think about and maybe engage in some planning process for our schools, elementary, regional, you know, like over the next 10 years, like is what could be done, if anything, to try to alleviate these budget problems. And the suggestion was that the committees urge that the superintendent, and I think probably the new superintendent, um, start such a strategic planning. Anything else?
Can I just talk a little? So to that point, um, next Wednesday, I have a kickoff meeting. So along those lines, more financially focused, but at the same time thinking about, uh, but at the same time, thinking about sort of structural aspects of our finances, where they sit, where they might be sitting for this district and the others that I'm working with. We are engaging with a firm that does that type of consulting work. And so we're going to start a little bit of that. It won't be quite as, you know, broad as what would really need to happen because I think there are questions around, you know, educational models and those kinds of things that can have a pretty profound impact and choices you'd make and things that you would do. But broadly, looking at, you know, what our enrollment trends are going to look like a little bit more. Look at our financial trends over the next few years. Are there areas of our budget that it would make sense to make changes to or structurally organize ourselves differently? Those are the kinds of questions we're going to pose these folks. So it won't be a be all, end all conversation, but I think it's a good starting place to start looking at those. Again, we do, you know, we routinely, when opportunity permits, look at those kinds of things and think about those kind of things. But to have an outside set of eyes that have expertise in this a little bit to help us is a good place to start and give us a few ideas as we look at this. So I think it's probably a multi-year sort of thing. I don't know if you read the paper, the Northampton superintendent's, you know, looking at that same sort of thing. They're doing a much more wholesale look at, you know, I think something like what they're doing in Northampton is probably a second tier kind of step for us. I think this will be a place to start for us to look at some of the internals and financials particularly, and begin the framing of it and some of the questions that we need to find answers to. And then I think, you know, as a second tier, a more broad-based question around, you know, the way Northampton's looking at it around, you know, vision and goals and that sort of thing are also an important step. But I think for us, we can do that as a second tier of work.
Well, that's great. Two questions. Who is the "we" who's doing this with the consultant? And secondly, at this first stage, does it consider our infrastructure? Like, do we want, can we continue to use all? Well, I'm thinking region now, so maybe. I'll stop, you can just tell me about who is taking part in this.
So the company's technical name is, I believe, Open Architects. So part of what their business model is is about providing financial analysis software and things that tap into your accounting system and give you nice analyticals that you can look at on a regular basis, that sort of thing. But they also have staff that are consultants that have experience in the field. So the particular person we'll probably spend most of our time with, and this will be mostly a sort of business office exercise. Person we'll spend most of our time with is a person that was formerly, worked for the city of Springfield, both as their school business official. And I think ultimately, he also worked as their business official for the entire community, the entire city. He's worked in that role in some other places as well. He stepped away from that and moved into this consulting-type work as a sort of end of his career kind of thing. So I think he's got a wealth of knowledge that's going to be helpful for us and has looked at extraordinarily complex situations. I think for us, because we have multiple districts that we're sort of interacting with, that's going to be, hopefully, an intriguing question for them to look into. But is it, is important to sort of see that broader context and think about that as a whole, as opposed to any, you know, each individual district? And now I forgot the second part of your question.
No, well, I withdrew it because it's really more of a regional concern. So maybe we'll talk about it in two weeks.
I think we'll get into some of those topics, just to, yeah, yeah. Some of that will be, you know, capital infrastructure, both. I mean, we need to, you know, continue to invest in Crocker Farm. You know, we'll build a new building, and, you know, the day you open it, it's, you start to put wear and tear on it. So you've got to regularly invest in that and think about how do we work and maintain that? And then obviously, at the, in the other districts, there's, you know, other questions along those same lines. So absolutely looking at that.
Okay, thank you. I guess I could summarize that meeting by saying we need to look longer term so that we're not just lurching from budget crisis to budget crisis. All right, school committee updates. So I know Bridgette has one and maybe some of the others if you do.
So the first thing I'd say is I met with the School Equity Advisory Committee. They were a task force, but now they're an advisory committee. And we did some good work on the mission statement in determining, like, what the composition of that group would look like. We expect we'll be bringing that back to the regional committee and aren't quite sure if we bring it here too. We could, it is for the entire district, so that would make some sense. I think the big piece, aside from working on the mission, which was, which was pretty old, is that we're going to elect a chair and maybe co-chairs or maybe chair, vice chair, and have the person be a school committee member. So that's the piece. And then that we're really looking to do a lot more outreach to parents, to get current parents who are involved in the district involved in that. So that's my first update. And the second one is, let's see, BCG? I'm right, that is on my list too. So tomorrow, I'm on the BCG committee, and tomorrow, they scheduled the meeting at a time I was available. And then I got put into a meeting for a colleague who's out of town, and I can't miss that particular meeting. So I'm not going to be able to attend that. I feel sad about that. I'd done a lot of prep work on the weekend, getting ready to try and figure out, okay, what's this about? So, but Jen mentioned that she's available at that time if there were someone else who wanted to attend badly. But I think having someone sub in for me would be a good idea because it's an important meeting.
And Irv, you're the other rep, right?
I'm going to be there.
I'll be there as well.
Okay, well, I think we might as, and anyone can listen as a member of the public, but if we want to delegate someone to, anyone want to run against Jennifer for this? Thank you, Jennifer. Consider yourself delegated, and I'll let Athena know.
Great, thank you.
Did you have any updates?
Yes, I do. I attended the meeting of MPAC, the Multilingual Parent Advisory Council, and it was a great meeting. I learned more about the Common Antis Program even more, even more, and as well as the biliteracy seal that the state provides at certain grade levels. And also the Elementary Biliteracy Club, which is a new club at the elementary level this year, which is helping students be, have literacy in more than one language. So the club is focusing on their, the non-English language that children speak to help them with their literacy in that language. And apparently, they're looking for speakers of Japanese, Portuguese, Hebrew, or Yoruba to be language tutors for the biliteracy club. I have one other thing, which is a suggestion or a request for the chair to keep in closer contact with Amherst Media about our meeting times, dates, and locations because this meeting is not streaming on Amherst Media. They, I don't think Amherst Media proactively knows or seeks out school committee meetings. So I think we need to do more than inform. We need to, like, confirm that they know when meetings are taking place because this meeting in Board Docs actually says that it will be live streamed on Channel 15, and it's not being live streamed. We are in compliance with open meeting law because this meeting is open to the public, but people rely on being able to watch it on Amherst Media at home. And it says it will be live streamed. So if you tried to watch it and it wasn't live streamed, are you going to, like, jump in your car and come here? So that's just a request, thank you.
I think Debbie West-Morland has a comment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And also, sorry, just a request that since this meeting is recorded, can we send the recording to them so that they can play it or post it? Because people also rely on being able to watch the meeting after the fact.
Right. Sean will make that happen. You've already talked, yeah. So that Amherst Media would just post it to its YouTube channel or also run it on, either way? Do both, I hope. Okay, thank you. All right, yes, we will try to close that loop. It's been, it's been a rough week. Irv?
For some reason, I was back at BCG. The BCG is composed of the members who were, of the, that were selected, and they go to the BCG committee. And so the town manager sends out invitations through his office. So I don't understand how we can swap out on a, on a, on a, on a meeting-by-meeting basis, a member. And I don't even know whether that's permitted.
Well, I think it's fine with the town. We've already communicated. They're just waiting for confirmation as to who will take Bridgette's place for the day. I mean, we have backups to, and it made me think, in fact, we might want to have backups to more than just warrant signing.
Right, it's just a matter of continuity. These are really high-level meetings and also very, very important meetings. And the continuity of the membership is really, really important.
Yeah, thanks, Irv. The reason that I thought of having someone attend in my place was actually, like, for the purpose of continuity, to have somebody be able to report back the details for me and also just take my notes and, like, be able to bring input if the input that I had already was relevant. So that's what I was thinking about, and I think that's why we decided what we did.
But this is, this is a one-time substitution? I mean, yeah, right. Okay, any other committee updates? Sort of. Well, I'll give you a sort of update, okay.
The Elementary School Building Design Committee was supposed to meet on Tuesday at Fort Riverside and has been postponed to February 28.
This is not the regular committee? This is a subcommittee or something? It's the Elementary School Building Committee that normally meets on Friday? Is this a different committee?
It involved the architect, and it was a big meeting involving a walkthrough of the building and the sites and things. I'm pretty sure it was just the design subcommittee, but I'm also pretty sure other people were planning on attending, including myself.
All right, thank you. Any more updates? All right. You got a second crack at superintendent's update, if you wish.
It's been a lot about budget, so I think you've heard all I have to offer.
That is fine. All right, well, then we get to future agenda planning. First of all, the superintendent tells me we don't, we're not required to do all our agenda planning at an open meeting like this. We don't even have to have this on the agenda as a topic. Any, any member can send me any requests for, you know, for agenda items whenever they want, and we'll work them in, you know, as is possible. But if you, if there's anything you want to nominate as a topic, go ahead and raise it now. But again, you can email me anytime.
I just saw on your chair's update that you were going to ask to hear from Mindy Dom about the state budget process. And I think that would be an informative topic for all of us, especially those of us who are new.
Well, I would certainly report on it. Are you suggesting asking, inviting her to a meeting?
Or someone from, I don't know how big her office is, honestly. So, but like, you know how they can present and let you know, like, hey, here's the different revenue streams, here's different ways we do it, here's the point. Because when I was speaking with her at the Amherst College meeting, she said that timing is a lot of it. Like, what time do we go to the state house and say, hey, we need more money? What time do we put forward, like, oh, Joe Comafort's having a meeting about education funding at Greenfield Community College, sometime like really, really soon, if not last week? It was at a time I couldn't go, but she said it wasn't a place the public had input. You could only go and hold signs anyway. But like, being available at the right times in the cycle, I think those are things we could all benefit from knowing.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
Still wanting to get in touch with Amherst College in New Mass. How do we do that?
The town, that's the town manager's job, and he is on it. And I am assured that he is lobbying hard for schools. Jennifer.
Just to note that the four towns meeting is this Saturday from 9 to 11, and you should have the Google Meet link in your ARPS Google Calendar because that is definitely something I would forget about.
Right, although that does not directly affect the elementary schools, right? This is just for regional? Yeah, okay, but thank you for the reminder, yeah.
I mean, we all attend, so.
Yeah, right. Just for anyone wondering what that's about. Anything else? All right, then we've reached the end of the agenda.
I move we adjourn.
Didn't even have to ask. Second, second, all right, thank you. Irv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Sarah says yes.
Yes.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.